All right. Okay, so we are back in open session. And the first item on our agenda is the Town Manager's Report.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I am going to be quick because you have a lot on your agenda. There is a report in the packet. And I think the only things that I wanted to mention, we have a joint DEI Commission and CPD are hosting an informal coffee on this Wednesday at 2:00 PM at the library. So on Wednesday, December 7th. And I think this should be a nice event for members of the public to meet our police officers. We will have a number of them there. We do have a number of new police officers in town, and people probably haven't had the opportunity to meet all of them. So we do have that going on. We had a very successful tree lighting ceremony yesterday. I know we're reporting, we had about 5,000 people in attendance. I think it may have been more than that. We had great weather. Really, it was wonderful. I was standing next to a group of kids who were really excited to see Santa. So that was very nice. And just a big thank you to the Rec Department, Police, Fire, CPW, the Light Plant, Minuteman Media Network, Visitor Center staff, and all of the groups that attended and participated. And I think those really were the only things I wanted to mention. I'm happy to answer questions about the report that's in the packet.
Yes.
Just a quick question. It's terrific that the DEI Commission is holding that session tomorrow at the library. I just want to confirm that that's the select board-appointed DEI Commission that's sponsoring this?
Yes, it is, in a joint session with the Police Department.
Very good. Thank you.
Is that Wednesday or is it Tuesday?
Wednesday.
It is Wednesday.
Wednesday at 2:00 PM.
Great, thank you.
I have a quick question from the packet. There was an item about the Centennial Arts Center. Is that the new construction going to be happening at Concord Academy? And if so, I think I recall that it means there's 57 or something parking spaces that are going to be needed on Main Street now. Is that the same project?
It is the same project.
Okay, so is there anybody looking into whether we can handle that many more cars parked on Main Street? Whether there's going to be any problem there?
Planning Board.
Right, that is a project that's being reviewed by the Planning Board.
Right, right. Because in your packet, it said the Planning Board recommended that the zoning board... I just want to make sure that we're all aware of...
Especially with no parking meters.
Yeah, that's why I was thinking about it. Right. Okay.
I just wanted to note that the item about the trolley project, I think that, you know, while the project, I would suggest, was a success in terms of understanding how such a service could operate, I also was startled by the calculation of the per ridership fees, you know, costs. And so we are still a long way away from having something that would be more financially, that would make more financial sense. And so what I'd be hoping to see is some plan or suggestion of how we could get closer to a sustainable cost per ride. Anything else for the Town Manager? Okay. From the Chair's perspective, I really don't have any statement that I'd like to make tonight. So I'm going to move ahead now to our next item on the agenda, which is the joint meeting with the School Committee to discuss the Tier 3, or what I call large capital planning projects. So the School Committee is here, present, can call themselves to order.
I guess I will call to order...
Yeah, come on up. Come on up to... There's seats for all of you at the table since you're meeting as well.
So we...
Oh, there, right, four. Yep, there we go. We've got a...
We got it here.
We've got a good...
Alexa, can you speak into the microphone?
All but one member.
So we don't have a consent panel tonight, right?
So I'll call to order the Concord School Committee.
Okay. And so...
I believe too, our Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent are on Zoom, I think. Maybe.
Okay. And so I guess, you know, the point of this discussion is to see, well, we did a preview of large capital planning projects. There were none, you know, new ones in the offing, other than the mega project of the school. And of course, the necessity now, it's $7.2 million that's being requested of additional funding, which in itself is a Tier 3 project in effect. And so I guess this is that checkpoint to see whether we're all on the same page, and are we going ahead with what we've got.
Yeah. And I think the other thing is that this would be the opportunity that if we had any feedback from the Finance Committee on a financial impact of projects and/or any feedback from the public on the plan, if we had new items in the plan, you would be talking about them at this point. So again, there isn't anything new, so there really isn't any official action for the boards to take at this meeting. We do have a few slides in the packet to talk further about the middle school, the impact of the middle school. And we did prepare that in anticipation of your later discussion to vote on warrant articles, but with having the School Committee here, we thought it might be better to bring that up now.
I know that there have been further discussions on financing options.
Yes.
And, you know, especially in light of the additional funds that are needed for the school, it'd be good to see what that looks like.
Yeah.
When we very first started this Capital Planning Task Force, remember, Teri, you were way back then, and we had a lot of goals for that. And one of it was to have these conversations so that we knew we could integrate the needs in the school and the town. But one of the other goals of that committee, I thought, was to learn how to, or talk about smoothing debt, so that we didn't have big surprises, or we didn't have, we didn't find that we couldn't afford some of the things that we really needed. And I'm finding that we're talking about debt tonight because of the middle school, but we haven't really done a good job in this process yet of having that conversation about smoothing debt. Do you understand what I'm saying? I mean, we're having it because we've got this big middle school, and we're talking about what's the impact, and what are some of the levers we have to mitigate that impact. But that should be like an ongoing thing that we do every year.
Right.
When we do this capital... So I'm more talking about, not about the middle school, I'm talking about the process. So is the process looking forward to what do we think we're going to ask for appropriation for? Or is the process more about a conversation around timing and other levers we have available to us to smooth debt service?
So I think it's both. But it is a look at the next 10-year horizon. And it doesn't mean we can't look further than that. But it's really for the 10-year period. And I think what complicates it is we don't have any hard data on the next project. We talked about what the next projects, or what at least the town hopes the next projects will be. We have some very preliminary data on cost, but we don't have, we don't have a specific project that we're trying to do in a specific period of time. We're still trying to figure that out. So I'm hoping next year's conversation is a lot different, a lot meatier, and a lot more in-depth, because we would hope to have more information on the next town project, whether it's public works or it's a combined...
I guess the only thing that I suggested, rather than looking at FY '24 to FY '33, which is what we're doing now, and just what we're looking at is what do we expect to bring forward for appropriation, to look at all of the projects that we're already spending money on, or projects that have already been approved, and maybe even, we haven't even raised the bonds yet, so that we get to that question of smoothing the debt.
Okay, and so in that case, it's the middle school.
Exactly.
Because otherwise, the only other...
The other ones are heads down. They're happening, right?
Right, and that's the, I think, the slides we have in the packet tonight.
Right. I think it would be helpful to go through those few slides, because there were, you know, I had that question about the 20 years and the 25 years, just all about, all of that stuff that we can look at.
Sorry, Cynthia.
One of the projects I don't think we've really been talking about on our side, and I'm not, I don't want to figure it out tonight, is the solar at the middle school. And I'm not really clear where we are with that, how it's going to be financed. Is it really the responsibility of the light plant, or of the town, or the schools, or who? So that's a large capital project.
My understanding is that that is a light plant project.
It's an enterprise fund, and that was explicitly excluded. Unfortunately, that was explicit, all of the enterprise funds.
Because there are others, too.
We have big, big...
No, no, no. But I think, so there was a 2015 Town Meeting vote.
Yep.
That said all solar would be under the purview of the Town Manager. So if somebody could just figure that out with Town Council, and figure out what the details of that vote are, was it sort of a... I'm not really clear on what that vote meant.
Right. I'm not either.
So I would have to go back and look at that. I would reiterate that it is a light plant project. The Town Manager is actually the General Manager of the light plant, and so I have to go back and...
Right, so I just read the language of that town warrant article. I'm not sure what the goal was of it, honestly.
Yes, I don't know either.
Well, yeah, I was looking at that when you sent it to me today, and I thought it gave the town permission to do leases on solar.
Right, so I just, if somebody could just, I don't want to figure this out tonight, but it is a large project, and I know it's an enterprise fund project, but we're all ratepayers, right?
Yep.
So it's just something to consider. We did talk about that at the Capital Planning Task Force, and we decided not to, but in retrospect, you know, I think we should have, maybe we should have figured something out regarding that. Thank you. Okay.
But it's, the power from the solar is not to provide energy to the school. It's still going to be sold back to the light plant, so it's just kind of a lease of their roof, isn't it?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. It's supposed to be a project that makes economic sense for the light plant.
Right.
So it's an investment.
So it's just a place to...
As opposed to a pure cost.
It's a place to put solar panels.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
So then, anything else for this session? I mean, this year's process has been pretty quiet compared to our usual process, and now next year, it may be different.
Are we going to go over those slides?
Yeah, let's go over those slides.
All right.
So... I guess my point earlier was, these slides are exactly what we should be talking about at Capital Planning meetings.
Right.
You know?
But, Mary, the thing is, I think that the, it's not so much that we're not considering the sequence of the capital projects, it's that the middle school is the elephant in the room, and that is so, so big that it means we're not really seriously looking at what is coming next.
Good. Okay, sorry. I gotta stop track.
I mean, that's not, that's not a good thing.
That's not, okay.
So we have Bob LaLecher and Sandy Smith here to talk to us about these slides. So I don't know, do you want to come?
The microphones are the things that are most in demand. Yep. Okay.
I wrote chairs.
Right. If I miss and close a paper.
Who is this guy, Sandy Smith? He's told us.
The National Board Manager. He's had a cover on council.
Yeah, Sandy.
On council.
Yeah, okay.
Peter. Do you want to say anything first?
Okay.
Thank you, Matt, for having the session. Thank you for having me tonight.
Get into the microphone.
Over the last two or three weeks, Bob and I have had some conversations about ways in which we might broaden the market for Concord's debt, particularly given the size of the upcoming middle school financing. So the first slide in the deck tonight will talk about ways in which we might be able to do that.
Oh, yeah, there, got it.
There we go. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So typically, when securities are sold, there's a legal notice put in the paper of the sale, and then after the sale, there might be a tombstone that sort of advertises who the underwriter was that bought the financing and what the pricing was. But in the first case, it's sort of buried in a section of the paper that very few people probably really focus on. And secondly, the tombstones come after the fact. So one of the concepts that we've talked about in terms of broadening the market for Concord bonds would be to advertise a little more proactively in the local press that the town is going to be selling some bonds, so that individuals who might be interested could get in touch with their broker, or their financial advisor, or their portfolio manager, and encourage them to put an order into the, one of the various syndicates of dealers that might be bidding on the issue. And this allows them to register their interest, and it will help the underwriters price the, price the securities at the most aggressive level possible. So of course, this would have to be done with Bond Council approval, because we don't want to get into the position of, of having the town be marketing its own debt, so we'd have to be a little careful about how we do it. But it's, it's something I think that's worth talking about. So numbers one and two really are sort of part and parcel of the same, the same thing. The third bullet point is kind of interesting. Muni bonds are generally issued in $5,000 denominations. Occasionally, there's a $1,000 denomination, because sometimes there are odd amounts of bonds that are sold. But generally, it's a $5,000 denomination. And sometimes that's too large for civic-minded individuals who might want to support their local municipality by buying some of the debt. So a number of years ago, this, dealers in the market developed the concept of a mini bond. And one of the more interesting and, I think, successful issuers of mini bonds happens to be the city of Denver, Colorado, which is a AAA-rated credit, has no need necessarily to do this, but they wanted to do this to develop community support for their capital projects. And so they developed a program, and they've issued five or six issues of debt over the last, mini bond debt over the last 12 or so years. It's AAA, the denominations are $500 as opposed to $5,000. The bonds are only available to the residents of Denver. And as I said, they're, they're issued to try to stimulate local support and commitment for the, for the capital projects of the city. So that's another, another way that one might think about trying to develop a slightly broader market among individuals who otherwise might not be able to participate in the sale of Concord's bonds. The last bullet doesn't deal with the local community so much as it deals with institutional buyers. And I have another slide, which I sent over to Bob today, and I don't know, Shannon, do you, do you have that? Could you pop that up on the screen, please? And wait for this, for the slide to come up. I also have some hard copies, if that would be helpful.
It's a curious thing with residents of, sort of, pay me now, pay me later. They, if you pay now, then you could get reimbursed, in effect, for the tax impact by your bond proceed, you know, principal and interest.
So they're going to pay taxes on a tax-ten basis.
In advance. Yeah. Well, hopefully, a favorable rate, too.
Exactly, yep. So, so here, there we go, right. So this, this illustration shows the AAA general obligation bond yield curve as of last Friday, starting about 2.4%, and going out to about 3.4%, almost 3 and 1/2% in 30 years. And along the bottom, you'll see years to maturity on the x-axis, and yield on the y-axis. And along the bottom, you'll see some lines, which I've labeled with the, to indicate sort of what the buying patterns are for different segments of the market. So individuals, folks like you and me, who might have a relationship with a broker, generally participate in the sort of 1 to 10-year range of the, of the yield curve. In other words, maturity is out to 10 years. From today, it would be out to 2032, for example. Now, these aren't bright lines. Think of these sort of as a probability distribution, if you will. So there are clearly people that participate on either ends, and perhaps beyond the ends of these bars. But generally speaking, this is where broker-dealers see different types of buyers participate in the market. Managed accounts would be individuals who have a portfolio manager at a, at a bank or at another private investment firm, managing their securities portfolios, stocks and/or bonds or both. And then banks, commercial banks, generally participate in the 10 to 15-year range. Mutual funds have probably the broadest range, because, as you know, mutual funds, there are sort of intermediate maturity mutual funds, and then long maturity mutual funds as well. So they participate generally between 10 and 25 years. And then it gets kind of interesting, because at the long end, you have property and casualty insurance companies who have long-tailed liabilities, and so they're looking for long assets to match against those. And then the, the last group of buyers, significant buyers, are arbitrage funds. And these folks are, are buying muni bonds against positions in Treasury securities. And the Treasury Department auctions 30-year US government bonds every quarter, and so these folks are looking for basically 30-year munis to arbitrage against those. So they'll buy the cheap one, relatively speaking, and sell the more expensive one, and then wait for that relationship to, to revert to a more normal pattern, and then they'll reverse the trade and make money, hopefully, for them on both sides of the, of the transaction. So if you look at, at this, and you look at what Concord's history has been in issuing its debt, generally speaking, we've gone out 20 years for our school debt. The regional district went out to 25 years for a portion of its debt, but there really has been no Concord debt issued beyond 25 years. And so there's a, there's a portion of the market out there that has no Concord paper. And Concord paper would be very attractive to, to those, to those buyers. It's high quality. We don't issue huge amounts of paper, although this issue for us is large. And so I think there would be significant demand for, for Concord bonds in that 25 to 30-year range. So that's, those are some of the thoughts that, that Bob and I have shared over the last few weeks, and I'll pass it on.
And the curve is really flat at that end, so you don't pay a lot of premium for getting that additional horizon.
Exactly right. Exactly right. One thing you'll notice, the yield curve is not inverted, and, and the Treasury curve right now is inverted for a whole lot of technical reasons. The muni curve basically never inverts, and the reason is because of credit risk in the muni department that you don't, in the muni market, that you don't have in the Treasury market. And so the Treasury curve is strictly an interest rate play, in terms of how traders and dealers think interest rates are going to play out over the next 30 years. Whereas in the muni market, there's an aspect of that, but people want to get paid more for taking longer-dated credit risk, whether it's AAA, double A, or B double A, whatever it is. So that's why that curve, you'll never see that curve really invert. But it's about as flat as you will see it right now. In the last five years, I think you, you pay about seven or eight basis points to go from 25 to 30 years. Seven or eight hundredths of a percent. So as you say, Matt, the premium for, for going that extra five years is very, very small.
Would our underwriters help us with that, the, the other channels of selling that you mentioned in your first slide, the mini munis? Would our underwriters, or how do we get those out to the street?
So the, sorry, the, if we wanted to do a mini bond program, we would basically work with the town's financial advisor to do that. The underwriting community would not be a participant in that. They would not be underwriting that. It's more, it's more like a private placement from the town to the, to individual investors.
So it looks like your interest rate, I think you said this from last Friday.
Yes.
Is 2.5% to 3%.
Yeah.
Okay, well, maybe that's what I don't understand, because I think in our other charts, we've been estimating 5%, 5%.
Redding last week sold a one-year van, 3 and 1/4, for instance, sorry. Last week, Redding sold a one-year, one-year bond anticipation note for 3 and 1/4, which is much higher than what's shown. Cover bid was 350, and believe it or not, the cover behind that was almost 4. So, you know, this is a very optimistic view of, it's, it's a generic data source, I guess I'll say, not really a marketplace.
Okay, I guess I don't understand that, because it...
But the, still, the statement about it being flat at the end of the curve is still true.
That's correct.
Okay.
Carrie, if you want to go to the next slide?
Now, let's talk about debt impact.
It still seems like 5% might be like a worst case, but which is, all right, maybe not.
If I could, I wouldn't get too committed to any one number.
Right, right, exactly.
Because this market moves around...
Right, right.
30, 50 basis points a month.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, we could, we could see, we could see rates lower, we could see rates higher by the time this, the town started to issue its debt.
Thanks, Sandy. You see a chart here and some numbers of the current excluded debt that Concord has, and that does include a small piece for the middle school. If you were looking to have that theoretical discussion about where to tuck in debt, debt, and how to smooth it out, you'd look at these numbers, and you'd say, well, in year four, there's a, there's a bit of a drop-off in debt, so maybe we could do something in the fourth year, for instance. One of the tricky parts about debt is you can issue level principal, which is all those declining lines, or level debt service, which would be straight across, but there's no such thing as increasing debt service. That's not legal. So that would be nice to couple with this, is gee, we can't afford very much in the first few years, but we'd really like to issue stuff further out. You can't do that.
Well, unless you only have capital needs further out.
Yes, certainly. If you can delay needing the money, yes, but you can't get the money today.
And if you have a stabilization fund.
Right. You can use a stabilization fund for the first three years, for example.
If you do the next slide, please. The next slide will show, this is the debt that needs to be borrowed one way or the other. So the middle box is the current authorization from last winter's Town Meeting, and the box down below is what you're asking this winter's Town Meeting for authorization for. Different scenarios have been looked at by the Finance Committee. 25 years level principal, which is the most common way to issue debt. 25 years with level debt service, which has a great deal of appeal to put money out to taxpayers in the future. And then to Sandy's point, to broaden the buyers and broaden the market, if you go 30 years, it broadens the buyers and, you know, lengthens that out further. Just some quick points. Again, this is the cost of the debt you have not yet issued. So it's anywhere from $1,200 to $900 generally for existing needs, for existing approved debt. You can see that you'll save 250 bucks in the early years by using level debt service instead of level principal. That's certainly appealing. You'll save another 80 bucks or 75 bucks if you spread it to 30 years instead of 25. It doesn't sound like much, but it's 75 bucks a year. And interestingly, the way I first looked at this, the extra 7.2 million down below costs you about 80 bucks. If you do a 30-year level debt service for the whole amount, you're effectively having the buyers... You can see that you'll save 250 bucks in the early years by using level debt service instead of level principal. That's certainly appealing. You'll save another 80 bucks or 75 bucks if you spread it to 30 years instead of 25. It doesn't sound like much, but it's 75 bucks a year. And interestingly, the way I first looked at this, the extra 7.2 million down below costs you about 80 bucks. If you do a 30-year level debt service for the whole amount, you're effectively having the buyers or the taxpayers in years 26 through 30 pay that $7 million extra cost. That wouldn't be there otherwise. So it's just kind of a coincidence with math.
Yeah, it also ends up with that 30-year level debt service, the two added together is a thousand bucks.
Yes, if you added them together, that would be the entire project, yeah, about a thousand bucks.
So also, it looks like, probably to simplify it and make it understandable for everybody, you're borrowing in these charts all the money at the same time, right?
That's correct.
But in reality, we might not do that, right?
That's correct.
So is it even possible that we, like, say, the last phase of the project, maybe we do some bans or whatever, and then we get to that year four when the debt service is going to drop by the time we borrow that last chunk?
I don't think you could get as far as year four without any impact, but I think you could push a lot of the impact into the future.
Right.
You know, depending on the exact construction schedule and the need for cash, that's usually two years-ish, might be a little more, might be a little less. So you wouldn't have to borrow all the money right away. You'd probably want to borrow a third or a half right away. But as to whether you did a ban at a very low interest rate or permanent, you know, that's to be decided. But that's definitely one of the tools you have to smooth out the debt service.
Right.
Carrie, if you go to the, or go to the next slide. This is probably what's more interesting. This is the total debt. This would include that prior slide with the existing debt. So this is what the taxpayer would see as total debt service, total excluded debt service. So that again, if you were looking at a 25-year level principal, it'd be $2,400 in the first year if you issued it all at the same time, and it'd be just over $2,000 if you did level debt and you did it in 30 years. So this, you know, $400 difference is certainly noticeable. And then again, down below is the additional cost of the money being requested this winter. But what you'd want to do is effectively, I think, back into it. You'd want to target, how much debt are we willing to pass on to the customers in the first year, second year, third year? And then you'd think of all the tools you have. The next slide, please. So this just shows you pictorially what I've just discussed, the different ways to issue. No surprise that the two 25s drop off sooner and the 30-year keeps going, but you can see the 30-year is incrementally cheaper the whole time, not hugely different from the 25-year level debt service. But you can see that the level debt service is a significant savings in the early years compared to that blue line, which is the traditional way of issuing level principal. Next one, Carrie, I think, just one more. As you mentioned, Terry, you know, you could stagger your issuance pattern. I just showed you worst case if you borrowed it all at once. That probably would not happen. You also have a stabilization fund. And just as an illustration, I know you've talked about $5 million in the past, so I've illustrated a way to use $5 million if you did issue all at once to totally flatten out what the taxpayer would see, to just about $1,800 a year instead of over $2,000 a year. And again, you can, you have, you know, several tools to use, but if I were to go over all of them, we'd be here for hours. You just have to sort of realize that you can be flexible as a town as the time gets closer. And you can talk about other projects that you might have that are excluded debt and kind of where you see going with that. So that's all I have. Is there any questions? I think the main point is you have tools here.
Yeah, I have a comment and a question. My comment is I'm getting much more comfortable with the 30-year, you know, originally, I think, let's just pay it sooner and pay less interest, but you're actually convincing me that 30 years would be better because it also matches the life of the asset. I mean, the school's going to last for 50 years. Why not run it over a longer period?
Because I remember Bob making a, the whole
Bob.
Thing about buses and using that as an example of almost a fallacious argument of that if you match the debt with the asset, you just never catch up, right? You're always behind.
I would say there's a significant difference in philosophy inside and outside the tax levy. Inside the levy, you have infinite debt that's always going to be there. There's always going to be a reason to borrow. So generally, I think you want to borrow for shorter terms and get it over with, which is what you were saying, Mary.
Right.
When you talk about excluded debt, you know, Concord is an example. You borrow a little more often than most, but you still only have a handful of issues out there that are excluded, you know, and they're different sources like the Vogts School and the regional high school. There, you can, you don't need to pay it down fast. That doesn't have to be the overriding philosophy, or the other things.
Okay. Glad to hear it.
I've got one more question. You're looking for tools. Don't we also have the reduction in the operating expenses because we're consolidating the two schools to use to help us bring that down?
You do, and I'm not really sure how that math works because you're reducing some cost inside the levy and you have an expense outside the levy.
Yeah, I know.
So effectively, when you do tax classification, you could make a larger gap, if you will, below the levy. So you're, I don't know, 5.5 million below the levy now, you can consciously go to 6. Then you'd have to pay the debt, but the taxpayer would be paying less inside the levy, and that would offset. So it's kind of two kinds of money in Concord.
But that's not, that's not the point of it. The point of it is to reduce the total net cost to the taxpayer.
That's true, but you don't have a savings account where that half a million a year is going to be. It's just expenses you're not going to see. So if you reduce the taxpayer's bill inside the levy, you can't reduce the taxpayer's bill outside the levy. Debt has been borrowed. But you can reduce it inside the levy and have the total tax bill be $500, you know, $1,000 less.
So the problem would be how to redirect it to the excluded debt. We don't know how to do that.
Effectively, yes. That's, that would be a
That's the problem.
I think the guidelines process could do that.
No, the guidelines process can save the operating, but what he's saying is we don't have a way to take that savings and then put it towards debt service. We have a way of reducing, because you can't
But you have the, you have the additional operating funds in the general fund that you can use to pay the debt service that's outside the levy limit.
I think what we're learning is, at least what I'm learning, is that the mechanism to do that, I don't know, like, how do we get approval to do, how do we do that? And I thought it was going to be simple.
Where does the money come from to pay the debt service?
No. How do we actually, so, we say to the schools, you've saved some money, right? We're going to take that out of your operating budget. That we can do easily with the guideline process. So now we've got this, let's say, a million dollars, because it's going to be quite a bit of money we're going to save from consolidating the schools. How do we reallocate this to the debt service? I don't know that mechanism.
We appropriate it to debt instead of the schools.
No, I don't.
You can't, you can't do it directly, but you can do it indirectly. Let's pretend that you were taxing taxpayers to the full levy in Concord, which you're not, but let's just say you were.
Right.
By cutting the school budget by, let's say, the million dollars, you could say to the taxpayers, we're going to now tax you a million less than the levy. And that would effectively pass the million on to the taxpayer.
Right.
Now, in addition to that, we're also going to pile on the excluded debt to you, but your tax bill will be a million dollars.
Yeah, I don't think we physically have to transfer anything. The net effect to the taxpayers is the same.
We give it back to the taxpayers.
Yeah.
It's the same thing. You're right.
Just tax less.
We don't have to actually move it.
Put it in, move pockets.
Yeah, right.
So the taxpayer sees it in their tax bill.
Well, I mean, what you see, when you look at the other budget, the school's budget that, that draft is available, is right around 2025, instead of the school's budget going like this, it goes like this for a year.
Right.
And that's because there's 50,000 roughly less that they're needing.
Yeah, I see it now.
And the taxpayer's benefit.
So rather than us seeing it in the budget in the Finance Committee report, what we'd see it in is our tax bill. So our tax bill is going to be net
Well, you see a lower budget for the school that year.
Net of the savings that we see in the school,
Yeah.
net of the increase because of the debt service. Okay. So we don't have to move it within the budget.
No.
Does that make sense?
Right. We don't have to.
Always makes sense to you.
We don't have to create a fund.
We're kind of in the weeds.
But as far as you understand, it's all going to work out, just the same way.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
But you can't see it.
That's the thing. I think that that's probably what some people object to.
Well, we talk about it all the time, but we never, I've never understood how it's going to work.
I think that's
And Bob brought up, how are we going to reduce the impact?
But that is, I think, is a key point, that I, one of the parts of this whole equation is that consolidation will save money. And as a result, that will, to some degree, offset the cost of the schools. It's the whole thing by far, but it, you know, some benefit.
Okay.
But that some people would prefer to see that explicitly somewhere so that they know how it's accounted.
Exactly.
And unless you know where to look, all you see is that, well, the budget has a little pothole in it.
Right, right.
Yeah, but we can write a text footnote, you know, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, just saying. I think for a lot of folks, they would like to see, you know, put their hands around it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And we're not going to be able to do that.
Probably not. Okay. Yeah.
I was just going to say, our, in our presentations, for example, to the Finance Committee where we show our best estimations of our budgets over the next five years, you do see, you know, our increases, which have historically been around 3%, 3%. You do see that. So that is, I think, the best place to visualize it.
Exactly.
Right. So it's not where you want it, but it's there. You know what I mean? In terms of, you know what I'm saying?
That's where you'll see the reduction
That's where you see, and yeah. And if you look at some of the stuff that we've put towards the Finance Committee, I think this fall, that's the best place to
It's quite telling.
To visualize it. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
All right. So are we done with the debt and debt burden? So debt issuance and
But how, actually, how is this going to get managed? We just have these ideas and
Well, our town treasurer comes up with the actual bonding strategy. I mean, what, but it is still up to us to raise stabilization funds to help prevent that spike. And so I think, Carrie, you're working on one or two town meeting articles to actually do that, right?
Yes.
Can we sell mini-bonds at the town, special town meeting?
I was thinking a GoFundMe might help. Yeah. Well, what is the problem with marketing your own bonds? I mean, you know, like, buy Liberty Bonds.
It's called self-dealing.
Okay, well, so, so, I mean, it's like this, this is, you know, a prospectus, we're not, you know, it's not an offer to sell, et cetera. But, I mean, we just have that footnote, but you still have a big poster at the town meeting, right?
It basically has to be a private placement so that, you know, it's
Yeah, call your broker. Call your broker.
Okay.
Yeah.
We want to be
We won't be taking checks at town meeting.
No, but you could have a broker with a table at the back of the town meeting.
Okay, yes.
If the board does have a strong opinion on what structure they would prefer, it would be helpful to know that.
Well, I think
And I don't mean tonight, just before it's issued.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I think I heard a general feeling that, I mean, that you made a pretty convincing argument for 30-year debt.
Yeah, you did.
The treasurer by law is the person who decides what to do, but then after the debt is sold, the treasurer brings it back to you to approve it. So it would be rather silly to bring something back to you that you didn't like.
Right, right.
So it just needs to all be worked out in advance.
The thing that, you know, I shared the same misgivings originally about long debt because I just think we need to be in a position to fund future projects, and of course, to the extent that we can extinguish our debt, retire our debt, that helps. But I think two factors play here. One is when you show those curves, we're all, we're about the same position for a very long time regardless. And then the other is by the time we get to 2052, you know, $1,000 will buy a cup of coffee. So, you know, it's not going to, it's not going to make a heck of a lot of difference to have that remaining on the books. Now, someone will probably put that on my tombstone. My tombstone will be ordered around that period.
And we won't be on the board anymore.
Well, I won't, one way or another, yeah.
I have another quick question that I think we keep, or I keep forgetting to think about. What is, does anyone know off the top of their head what the assessed value of PBD is right now? I mean, that will be a big asset that returns
Oh, boy.
You know, in 2020, you know, in a few short years.
Well, we've already come out with, it's like, sub 10 million.
Yeah.
Because of the zoning.
Exactly.
It's real, you know, it's, it's zoned, I think, A and AA or something. So it's not, you can't create a lot of lots.
Right, yeah.
That's not, would that be correct?
Well, it's, nobody
Well, then, there are all kinds of, you know, there are 30 different proposals for municipal purposes for that land, so, you know.
But it hasn't been seriously
No, and it won't be for some time.
Assessed because it doesn't pay taxes no matter what the assessment is.
Right, right.
But it's, you probably have eight or 10 lots in there.
Right.
It's 18 acres with frontage on two roads and, you know
Did we do that, Carrie?
No, I was actually going to make a comment very similar to Henry, that we don't spend a lot of time valuing municipal assets.
Right. I would like to get back to Bob's question. I think that I have never been a fan of longer than 20 years, but in this case, we have a 50-year asset.
Right.
So I really think 30 years, I've always wanted to go with 30 years on this project anyway. So I think it makes a lot of sense to look at it. And I'm wondering if you could run a scenario with 30 years and level debt and put the stabilization in and the staggered borrowing, and just, let's just see what it is. Because I, I think that might be an option that we could get excited about.
Well, and also, is 5.25% the going rate right now?
Approximately right now, yes.
For AAA?
Yeah.
Wow. Okay.
A week ago it was less. Ask me tomorrow.
Well, I mean, I think we should just use the latest information. Yeah. I mean, because, as you say, it's jumping around, and I, I mean, I'm hoping it's going to, and I know the Fed's hoping that it's going to trend down, right? That's certainly the lever they're trying to pull, but we can't.
I don't understand how that can be 5.25%, but that graph was about 3.
No, that was just to give a sense of what the curve looks like.
Yeah, but that was last Friday, you said.
The market's improved about 75 basis points in the last month or so, so, until today.
Yeah, today, it's a lot jumped.
I don't understand.
So
But you don't worry about it.
Any sense to me?
Sandy, you were just using a chart, probably a couple-year-old chart.
No, you said it's from last Friday.
Really? Last Friday? The one with your bands at the bottom?
It's a source, it's an online source where you can get yields, so it probably doesn't have the veracity that Bob's numbers have.
Okay, I was going to say, let's borrow from whoever they use.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, that's my question. It's like way off.
But you can, you can bet that the underwriters are waiting to pick their day that they're going to actually go public with it.
Well, you said that's possible. I don't know that it's really
All right, that's too much weeds anyway. We don't know.
Okay. Yes, Linda.
So just one other thing. Bob, you were asking, and Sandy, both were asking about strategy from the board in terms of being able to model, you know, the next step here for us. So do you need more besides our inclination for the 30-year level?
No, I don't need more, and I think it's really the treasurer that needs to hear that, so that when they borrow, they're doing what you prefer.
Yeah, but I'm referring to some of the other tools you were talking about.
Those are all pretty easy to do.
Okay.
You know, we can make different assumptions on when to borrow and
I think that that one's a key one, is just to see a chart that does break that out. I know it ends up getting kind of complicated, but it would be
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you, you're going to chop $200 to $300 off the early years by spreading it out over, say, two, three years.
That's significant.
Yeah, that's good.
All right.
Thank you.
So I think that then, now that does conclude our capital planning forum, unless there's any other business. Yeah, now we will, yeah, we'll talk about those. So, but I don't, I don't think you, the school committee has to be part of that. Yeah. This is select board, we're gonna, we're gonna do two different things. We're gonna recommend warrant articles, and then we're gonna recommend putting stuff on the consent calendar. Yeah, and by the way, the ones, yeah, so.
The 16th.
Right. There are things we're going to put on the. By the way, our, our recommendations in the, in the consent calendars for special town meetings. Want to make sure we don't conflict these two things. Okay. That's, that's if you're going to get them reviewed. Yeah. The warrant's open, so anybody could walk in the last day, drop this, whatever it is.
Legal review.
Legal review. And moderator will take a look too. Yeah, I think, you know, it's helpful to avoid technical glitches. Okay. All right then, let's move to our next agenda item. Thanks very much, Public School Committee.
Do you need to adjourn?
I don't, I think they can just adjourn.
That says we don't really need to adjourn.
You don't need to vote.
It reminds us every business, every building committee meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, guys.
All righty. So now we're going to talk about the intergovernmental agreement with Plymouth County about parking.
Yes, so Gail Dowd, our chief financial officer, is here to present this article.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I feel like I was just here.
You were.
Yeah.
You were.
Saturday morning.
Right, narrowly. Great, so thank you for this opportunity tonight. What I did want to do is talk about what this is, as well as briefly talk about what this is not.
Perfect. Great.
This is for you. So the first thing I think would probably be easiest to start, that this is not related to parking meters. This is not tied to any of the discussions that have been held as to whether or not parking meters will continue in the Town of Concord. This relates to an agreement for parking ticket management and online payment. So this would be, I use myself in this example, not that I would ever do this. So I come into the Town of Concord, I park in front of a fire hydrant, I get a ticket. This would be, we would be utilizing Plymouth County to allow for residents, wherever they live reside, to go online and pay their tickets, to manage the tickets, to help us with doing hearings, to track if tickets are past due, because there could be lien notices to the Registry of Motor Vehicles. So this is tied directly to parking violations, parking tickets for a host of items. If you park in front of a handicap spot, you're not supposed to. You park residential, if tickets were issued, if you parked in a residential area and you were not supposed to. Fire hydrants, parking bans during the winter. So it is all tied to that. So no, not tied to the parking meter. So if the parking meters were to go away, I would say we would still issue tickets for those that are parking illegally.
Yeah. So is there any potential confusion here? I mean, someone gets a notice from Plymouth County.
Yeah.
About their parking activity in Concord.
There would still be tickets from Concord.
From the Town of Concord?
Yes.
It's just the address will be in Plymouth.
Yes, and they would be able to go online and pay them. So we would, you do not have to go to Plymouth County to pay.
But I remember being confused because I think I told you last time.
You got one in Bartle.
I park at, at the, at the Hyannis Airport.
Hyannis.
And I got a parking ticket by mail that said Plymouth County.
So we would have a notice, we would put the links and everything on our webpage for people to be able to go and pay their tickets. So we're, they're actually, but a lot of communities are utilizing this. It's one of the more cost-effective methods to do it.
Sounds like they made a business of it, yeah.
Yeah. So this is a municipality?
Well, the county.
The county.
Oh, it's a county. It's a county, okay.
So when they are, and we did actually go out and do an RFP, and our current vendor declined to bid on it, and this actually was significantly cheaper than anybody else bidding on it.
And their role in the hearings is?
They would just issue the notices. We would still do the hearings. We would not want to pay them to send somebody from Plymouth County here. So we have an individual we utilize for hearings. So we would continue that process. They would just assist with the notices and clearing them once that they were, they were paid in final resolution.
And their take is $2 per ticket? That's it?
$2 per ticket, 50 cents per hearing, and then if we were to explore the potential to use handheld devices to issue tickets, which is something that we would be looking at as opposed to the old pen and paper, that we could utilize them if we didn't have another vendor. But for right now, it would just be the ticket in the hearing fees. So it is very nominal.
So how did we get from, from the $9,000 bid? I think you, you said we, in your memo, there were three bidders and two of them were bid 18,000, I think, and this, these bid 9,000? Was that just an estimate of the number of tickets that we'd issue?
If we use average tickets over the past couple of years, that's probably not very representative of what the ticket volume would be given COVID. So we looked backwards a little bit further, and that would sort of be on the high end if we went back to pre-COVID ticketing numbers.
So in other words, these people charge $2 per ticket, the others charge $4 per ticket, essentially, right?
And some of them also required minimums, that if you didn't issue enough tickets.
And there is no minimum with this.
There is no minimum.
And it's, and we can terminate on 30 days' notice?
Yes.
How could you go wrong?
Really?
And what was the volume before COVID?
And it's a very simple, I love, I think it was, I liked the agreement because it was so simple and straightforward. It was like it wasn't written by a lawyer.
We did involve legal counsel, but then we, they helped us with some of the language, and then I did notice the individual from Plymouth County is listening, so hopefully I'm not saying something wrong. But we went back and worked on it together from the operations standpoint. On average, the, the tickets, it's, I want to say they were about 1,300, but my guess would be they were probably over 2,000 in the pre-COVID. So it's not.
So it could even be less than that.
It could even be less than that. But this to us was a no-brainer, and I did get the question, what would happen if we did not do this? We would have to develop our own system, log our own tickets, track our own tickets, figure out how to deal with the RMV, which.
Right, right.
No offense to the RMV. So this was, in our opinion, the most cost-effective, and we've talked to many other municipalities that are using Plymouth County, and everyone said it was, it was a no-brainer. And some have moved from the vendor we previously used.
So whether we have parking meters or not, we still need this service.
Okay. Are we all set?
I guess the only other quick question, that is, with the confusion that was referenced, you know, when you get a bill from another location that you don't recognize, is, besides the website explaining that, is there any way that the actual bill can somehow reflect?
I can check with Plymouth County on that to see what some of the options might be or how we can communicate it.
But I mean, a lot of times I get a doctor's bill and you pay somebody in Maine. I mean, you know.
But I mean, it just cuts down on all the future calls that.
I can, I can definitely take that back.
Yeah, it's okay if the address.
I try not to have parking.
The address is.
The address is in Plymouth, but the name should still say Town of Concord.
Say where the violation occurred.
Parking violation.
Right. Okay, move to approve the intergovernmental agreement with Plymouth County as included in tonight's package.
Check it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so now we're ready for our joint meeting with the Personnel Board to discuss the Personnel Study Task Force final report. So do we have the Personnel Board? And thanks for your patience, or all this time that you've been waiting.
Well, the two of us are here.
Do you have a, do you have a quorum, or no? You know, if you're not deliberating, I, you know, I think you can just make your report and.
We thought the same. There's one individual new, Kate Ryan, and she was going to try to join, but she had a.
We do see a Kate iPhone.
Then terrific, then we do, actually.
I mean, there are a lot of Kates in the world, so can't be sure, but. If Kate Ryan is on the Zoom, if you could unmute and identify yourself, that'd be great. And then if, if so, and you want to call to order, you'd need a roll call vote.
Oh, hi, this is Kate Ryan. Sorry about that. I, I am here.
Okay.
Fantastic.
Great, so let's go ahead and you can call yourself to order with a roll call vote.
I'll call the Personnel Board meeting to order on December 5th, and we have a quorum, Liz Cobbs, Kate Ryan, and Bill Maratchek.
And then, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Well, I want to thank the Select Board for the invitation to come. Seems like from everything I've been reading, it's been a long time since you've had anybody in the Personnel Board.
Too long.
In front of you. So I think it's important, I'd like to, to have Liz Cobbs, who's sitting next to me, and she's going to participate in the presentation, and Kate Ryan, sort of give you an idea of their background, their experience, education, because I think, you know, you don't have otherwise an opportunity to get to know who you have on an important board that is, is involved with a lot of different activities right now. So Liz, I'll let you give a short overview of your background summary.
Hi. And to mimic Bill's thank you for having the time for us, and we really appreciate not only your time, but also the Personnel Study Task Force, which I'm, I came on to the board in the midst of that. So I'm not sure if you all select or requested that, that task force to go forward, or where it came about, but it was very helpful, I think, to understanding, for me as a new member of the Personnel Board, how and what were the issues that we should direct, directly address. So my name is Elizabeth Cobbs. I'm new about four or five months, seems like years, on the Personnel Board. And we've been very active, I guess, since, since joining, and Bill's been very helpful to bringing me up to speed on things and how, and what we needed to, to look into. My background, I have a PhD in sociology and a focus on policymaking, actually in Japan, not in the US, so you are all foreign to me. But, but I did a lot of work. I worked, I was an academic at first, and then I was hired by Merck, and I worked for 20 years for Merck in, in global positions. I was in Japan, I ran their policy office there, started the policy office for Merck in Tokyo, and after six years there, was in Europe, working on, on health policy issues and access issues for medicines across Europe. And then I came back to the US and did policy work in DC for a bit, before going global again and getting back into health policy in Latin America, Europe, Asia, and Japan.
Liz's background has been really key to sort of helping to, helping the Personnel Board to focus and helping the Personnel Board, you know, to providing her insight into various aspects. She also has one skill that has just been unbelievable, and that's her ability to, to do notes and take notes, and take minutes.
I see.
She can, she can talk and take minutes at the same time. It's, it's really an asset. Kate Ryan is the newest member. And Kate, could you just sort of give us an overview of your background and educational experience, like what you'd like to share with the Select Board?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person. I'm currently the HR manager for the Town of Wayland, a little to the south of us. Prior to that, I worked in Staples in HR, and I did everything from severance to policy to employment law, a little bit of everything in between. And prior to that, I worked in state government for about seven years. I was at the Inspector General's Office, and I worked in the state legislature, so I have a lot of policy experience as well.
Great, thank you, Kate. Nancy Crowley is a fourth member on the group, and she is well-known, I think, within the community, and has been involved with a lot of different programs and activities and boards within the, within the Town of Concord. She wasn't able to join us this evening. My background is, I'm an Air Force brat, so, you know, I didn't grow up around here. I, I have a law degree and an MBA, and, and I served about 35 years in various senior HR positions here in the greater Boston area, and thought it was time to give back to the community, all the kind of background and experience that I have been able to, to have. So it's been an interesting, very interesting time to.
Thanks so much.
On the Personnel Board.
For all the work that you all do and all of our town volunteers.
I want to personally, also think, there are three or four individuals who clearly have been instrumental in helping the Personnel Board. One is Amy Foley, who's the HR Director here in town. Another one is to my left here, Kelly Hebert, who has been involved with a lot of our meetings and providing input. Certainly Stephanie Oliver, at a time she was very involved with doing the minutes. And I think it goes without saying that we appreciate Terry Ackerman's involvement as liaison. She is insightful, she's, she's very knowledgeable about the town and its, its workings, and she's been extremely helpful to the Personnel Board, and we appreciate that very much. I think the, before we get to sort of the, the part, and I think everyone here around the table does have the report, right?
Right.
Okay, all right. You know, there is the recognition that the Personnel Board is responsible to various constituencies in town. Obviously, the town citizens, you've got the town employees, you have the town management, which includes the town manager and, and her staff, and you've got, you know, the Select Board and other boards in town. So I think we see our role and our responsibility to all of those particular constituents in this, in this town. And I think as we have had interesting discussions on some issues, I, I think I've tried to make clear that we're not just interested in just anyone, we're interested in the good of the community and what can we offer and what can we recommend to further those, those aims. So the person, what I thought we would do is I would start off with sort of the intro part of the presentation tonight, and then I'm going to let, turn it over to Liz, who can give, I think, the detail and the color to the, to the particulars. Certainly, a, a big thank you goes out to the Personnel Study Task Force. They've done a marvelous job in being able to bring together a tremendous amount of information and material. I think it will clearly help all of us in what are we going to be looking at for the future of the Personnel Board? What should we be looking at? What shouldn't we be looking at? And I think the other aspect of this is, is their, their work, their final report serves as a guide. It really does lay out, I think, a roadmap. It depends on which road we're going to go down, because there are going to be a lot of these that are going to take place. But we've tried in the Personnel Board to, to establish a focus, and we have identified four areas that we think are, are, if you take all of that report and you try to determine what are the important focus areas, we've come up with four. Now, clearly, those of you in this room could come up with probably four or five others, but it'll be important for us, I think, to get an idea that if you're in agreement.
How much they are there, so I don't know. We'll see.
So, okay. Sorry about that.
So we, we're looking for your agreement that the focus areas that we've identified are ones that, that you also support. This is our combined effort. It's just not my effort, it's not Liz's, it's not just the Personnel Board, but we need to make certain that we are heading down the right path. We're going to have to have some clarification and, and confirmation about the goals that are established, that, that Liz will go through in, into detail. And then I think there's also a need to sort of just talk a little bit about or understand, you know, who's managing this, this whole project, and just to get your thoughts on, on what that should be or shouldn't be. So I'm going to turn it over to Liz to, to go into detail, which really sort of, I think, starts on the second page of this document.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Bill. This is okay? You can hear me all right? The mic?
Yeah, at all, most important is the public, yeah, to hear you.
Maybe you can hear us.
Yeah, if you speak right into the mic, it works great.
Okay. Okay. All right. So as Bill identified, we had four areas of focus: communication, governance, HR, and employee relations. And those seem to be the primary areas of focus from the PSTF report. And we tried to detail them in a way that would help us to have a dialogue with you all about what actions we should be taking. We have a lot of high priority areas, as you can see on the charts, for each of them. And I wanted to address that right up front, because many of them overlap, and many of them are already addressed through the GovHR program that's in place right now. They're doing an assessment of the compensation program. If you want to jump in on that one. But that's, so there are several where GovHR is listed in the report. Somebody need another copy?
No, I've got it now. Thank you.
Okay. So just to, to make sure you're all on clear, I tried to use a color coding so that you could see which charts were different, right? So the first area of focus on page two of six, Matt, is the communication area. Okay. All right. And then the second area of focus, governance, and then the blue chart going into human resources, and then employee relations.
I like the color coding. Yep.
Good, good. I hope that was helpful. Now, you can see, as I was saying, that a lot of the priority levels are high, but there are overlapping. And at the top of page two, you can see that "high" is to be completed in the next six months. So "high" was also used more than others, because "in the next six months" seems more or less important, mandatory, I would say, out of the PSTF report. And so you can see, for example, I'm not going to, if it's, if you want me to, I can go through each one. But I thought since you have this in advance, I would just highlight a few important ones. And then if you pick up on others that you want me to comment on, I'm happy to do that. But under the communications section, if you look at number four, "reports from HR to key metrics consistent with Personnel Board's role or charge." So that's actually a rather complicated one, because it demands more of HR. But it also makes, it implies that we have to be clear about what the Personnel Board's role or charge is. And those things, I think, are important for discussion. Step one would be outline what the dashboard would look like, that we would need to have in order to really implement more effectively as a Personnel Board. And then to, and step two, to normalize those, that information that HR could supply to us. Now, Amy's gone off view at this point, but I know that's a daunting charge for her as part of HR's remit. But it really would be important for the Personnel Board, through our discussions as a board, and therefore recommending that we get more information about what is happening in the town on a regular basis so that we can make more informed decisions.
So Liz, can you give an example? I think you're talking about, it might be charts like how many new hires, terminations, performance reviews, that kind of stuff?
That's it. And you've given two great examples there. Thank you. So if, and that, you know, it jumps around, because there is overlap. But if you look at employee relations, there is some need for more engagement. And there was history that was shown through the Personnel Study Task Force that, you know, showed how the Personnel Board in the past was more engaged, had one or two meetings a year, not overly, but more meetings with employees, so that there was some engagement. That would be helped if we understood where their, where employees were needing more support. If on this dashboard, for example, we knew where hiring was most difficult, or where keeping employees involved was more difficult, then we could, we could step in in those cases. We could also try to, you know, look through, in the communications section, we were also trying to think, how could we help with the work that HR department has to do in terms of where they're advertising, et cetera? And there's a wealth of HR experience on the Personnel Board that we thought could be employed in that way.
Is some of this information available? It just hasn't been communicated to the Personnel Board? Or is some of this information wasn't even being collected?
That, that's, my understanding is that it's, it's collected, but it's not being, it's not available to the Personnel Board. But I could be wrong. We haven't seen this kind of information. So, for example, where, what part of the non-union employees are really down in staff? We don't have, we can't give you figures on that from the Personnel Board side. But I believe that that information would sit with the HR department.
Okay. I'm wondering though, was it a breakdown between the HR department and the Personnel Board? Or was it that the HR department just doesn't collect this information, yet now needs to begin to collect it?
I gotta turn that back to Bill.
For my, for my vantage, White and Carrie's here and Amy. The Personnel Board has never really been focusing on what kind of data would be helpful. So there hasn't been any requirement that's been imposed on anybody to, to collect the data. So there are reporting, reports that get done, I know on an annual basis, such as turnover. But the Personnel Board has been looking at, can't we have some kind of a monthly report? Can we get also, so terminations, new hires, vacancies? So that every single, we're saying, month, again, this has to be in agreement with, obviously, the town management. But this is what I've considered, in my experience, basic. No, I understand the value of that information. I do. I was just wondering how difficult it is to get it going. It's going to be work. I mean, especially at the beginning. I mean, none of these things are going to be just turning a switch.
I think some of those things were in the original charge of the Personnel Board, to give those reports to the Select Board.
I don't know.
I don't recall seeing that level of detail, but we could certainly look back and get back to you on that, on what was, you know, in the past versus where we are now. We also did ask a question in our last meeting of GovHR to see if they have dashboards that they could share with us at some point. And this is already the group that's hired, looking at classification and compensation. And they did indicate that they could talk to us in more depth about the kind of dashboard, which might help us get it set up quickly. Okay? So in terms of communication, that's the one that I pulled out, and I guess it generated some good discussions. So if there are others along communication, I'm happy to address them, but I'll move on.
I need to.
Mark Gales, could you? Thank you.
Okay. So on the governance, and if you look at the top, what we tried to do is come up with a statement. "The Personnel Board recommends adherence to requirements stipulated in the current Personnel Bylaw. The Board supports an evaluation and changes to the Personnel Bylaw to meet the needs of the employees in the town of Concord and rapidly changing employment market." And the employment market, I think, was an important factor, because, you know, during the pandemic, it was very difficult to hire, and people were retiring at faster rates, we understand. And so it's a challenge to get people in positions. And then there are, in terms of governance, you see at the top of the yellow chart that there are some documents that we have to keep in mind: Massachusetts general laws, the town charter, the Personnel Bylaw, and the Personnel Board Charge. So again, we see a lot of highs in terms of priority areas that we'd like to address. Some of them, you can see that GovHR is already hired and doing the classification and compensation review. So those things are high, but they're underway. So within six months is a reasonable recommendation. Personnel Board's role in review of benefits and recommending changes. We did think that input and recommendations from the Select Board would be helpful to us to understand the role that you see for the Personnel Board in that, in that respect. And then a few other things that I just wanted to highlight so we're clear and can have discussion here. If you look at number 10, "frequency and scheduling of regular days and times of Personnel Board Means," this is high. We're already doing that. And so that, that's an easy one to check off. And Bill is right. I am trying to get minutes out very quickly, and with Amy's support, getting them then posted. There was also a recommendation that we keep the Personnel Board materials up longer on the website, and that can be done immediately as well. So that, that's an easy win there. Job classification, I just mentioned. The Personnel Board's role, I mentioned. Then if you look at number 13, "job description, contents, and updates." In this one, it's, it's, priority level is low, but I do think it's an important one to highlight here, because we've mentioned both, the town manager pride HR strategy to the Personnel Board, so that job description discussions and updates can be aligned with the strategic intent. And that would be a new request. So we wanted to make sure that you're aware that that's what we're recommending here in the comments, and, and how that would then help us to do the work of the Personnel Board. If we're approving job descriptions, but we don't know how, how they fit into the overall strategy for the town, then it gets a bit gray, a gray zone for us as a Personnel Board to know that we're doing the right thing for the town with confidence. So that sounds reasonable. Any comments there?
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question. So it says here that the Personnel Board only has authority to modify the bylaw and the charge.
Yeah, I don't know that that's technically correct.
Yeah, I was just, that's what I was asking.
Yeah.
So I'm assuming that the Select Board writes the charge. Is that accurate?
Well, it's a little more complicated with the Personnel Board, because they're in the charter, right? And so it's a kind of a different part of the town government. I think town meeting would have to approve any change.
I think with the word "only," it just means Personnel Board only can work on the bylaw and the charge. They can't work, they can't change the charter. You're reading the word "only." See, they.
I guess what I'm really asking is, who modifies the charge? That's my question. Who modifies the charge, and how do we do that?
As the Chair mentioned, the Personnel Board is mentioned in the charter. It's in the bylaw, and there are some duties that are included in the bylaw. And then the administrative code, which is the charge for the Personnel Board. There's definitely some inconsistency. That charge wasn't updated as the bylaw was updated. So it is, it is probably one of the most complicated boards, because there are three different places. So this, this board can deal with the administrative code. Town meeting can deal with bylaw. And the charter is, that's the state legislature. That's not anything. We can take action here through town meeting to start that process.
Yeah, but we need to change the charter. I don't think we have to change the charter necessarily to achieve most of the goals we've got here.
But you can't, you can't amend the charter locally.
We can't do it. We have to ask the legislature. But again, I don't know that we have to amend the charter.
I don't, I don't think we don't, we don't have to get that deep.
That's right. I think we need to look at the charge and the bylaw.
Because I think that's what you're asking us, to help you do that. Right? And it's, we've had in our discussions that the fact that probably the most important one to tackle first, because right now, bylaw changes or bylaw recommendations are being gathered for presentation too. But the charge, the Personnel Board charge, I mean, I sort of see it, it's a collective effort. Terry was very nice to be able to do a little work here a few months ago on a, on a suggestion. But I see it as a, as a collective effort between the Personnel Board, perhaps recommending to the Select Board, that this is the charge, and you then have an opportunity to modify, change.
Again, the Personnel Board has kind of a distinguished position relative to the charter. So I think you're having a proactive role in that, as opposed to boards and committees, the Select Board is kind of created, you know?
Got it.
Yeah.
Got it. Good.
I think, I think the wording brought out good discussion, so I'm happy for that. But I do think it's a bit awkward, so I apologize for that. So "only modify," I think is how it goes. And that's, I think, what Terry was trying to point out. We're, we're not saying that we have the last word.
Right, there we go.
Okay, great.
I think that gets to it.
No, thank you. I learned a lot.
And that they're, they're misaligned at this point, I think, is where we have to.
Right. That's another important point.
So I think we all agree it's kind of a collaborative effort. And I think what Matt, what Matt's saying is, if you guys want to bring us a draft charge, right?
Well, yeah, again, we still have to think about whether the town meeting needs to approve it.
A charge?
We have to go to town meeting. We're working on that.
For the bylaw. What's the status of the charge?
Yeah, what's the secret?
Does the Select Board approve it, or is it a different creature because of their?
So Amy has her hand raised. I don't, nobody can see that. Amy, is this a response to the question on the table?
Yes, it is. And first, I just have to, I'm Amy Foley, Human Resources Director, and I apologize for not being there. I very much want to be, but COVID has decided to dictate otherwise. So, so the text of the administrative code from 1985, I've been doing a side-by-side analysis that I'll be providing to the Personnel Board and will also give to the Select Board for this week. And the, the text in the '85 charge very much matched the bylaw at the time, or ultimately got incorporated into the bylaw. So pretty much, if you do a side-by-side, you'll see that language in the, the charge has been modified by town meeting and is incorporated into the bylaw. So even, for example, the reports, I know that that came up as a question. The, the bylaw used to say that there would be a report of appointments to, of new positions. And the charge, the administrative code mirrored that. But then, it might have been in 2016, town meeting voted otherwise. And there are, there's just, when I give you this chart, you will see this side-by-side of how town meeting has, in effect, I believe, been, been modifying the items that have been contained in the charge to date.
Okay. So, but you will not be bringing anything forward to town meeting for 2023, right? You're, you will be for 2023.
On the bylaw.
For 2023. So for this cycle right now?
Right.
Okay, so you got something coming? Because we just had our town meeting preview meeting and.
Well, but we have communicated, thanks to Amy's, communicated with the moderator in terms of our thinking more globally, as to what it is. And this is not necessarily any different than what, what we've done in the past.
No, it's just, I was just curious if we had actions for this ATM or not. Yeah.
I mean, we have a huge study being conducted by.
Right. I expect much more to come in 2024. That's what I was guessing that.
No, no. Okay. So you're talking about.
For a town meeting, warrant articles. Are you going to bring anything for a town meeting to approve in April, May?
April 30.
Right. But you're talking about the regular classification plan and compensation. Right, right. I think Matt is saying, do you have any other things?
Our expectations are moving forward to bring something up as an article for December 16.
Wow, okay. So you must have draft language now? Oh, you mean it would be?
Well, well, we've indicated in this report that that's the expectation. We have something for you on December 16, and we're working on that now.
Okay. Wow.
That would be something that the Select Board would be putting on the warrant, would they not, or would the Personnel be doing?
I think they can put stuff on.
They put it on.
I'm pretty sure they.
They have in the past.
Yeah.
We would vote to recommend.
Right. Personnel Board puts it on.
Like to see it first, before we recommended it, wouldn't we?
Of course.
In that it's, it's a first, a first phase of a multi-phase plan. Yes, I think that's important to talk about.
Out of the Personnel Study Task Force, there was some immediate concerns about, are we in compliance with the bylaws? And how, how is it written now and what needs to be changed? So we wanted to engage that seriously, put it as a high priority, and are working for an article draft by December 16.
So these are like true-up edits? They're not new policy?
No, 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 no.
Okay. This is basically correct technical inconsistencies.
Just as we just discussed, misaligned right now, and we have to.
All right, now I understand, and how it's feasible to do something.
And it's a collaborative effort.
Because I would expect, like, any fundamental bylaw changes in terms of policy change would take longer.
Yeah. Agreed.
That's why I was stunned at first when you said December 16. I thought, wow, it's happening so fast. But, you know, for technical issues, I can clearly see you can do that.
Okay. We'll calm down now.
All right. So move on to area of focus three, human resources. The Personnel Board supports the current work with a third-party vendor, GovHR, for comprehensive review of compensation, classification, and benefits of non-union employees. So they are underway, working very hard and fast, hopefully. They indicate that they will be finishing a lot of the data collection within the month of December. And in the first quarter, we should have a first draft of their reports. And as you can see, there aren't as many subjects to be addressed in terms of. And as you can see, there aren't as many subjects to be addressed in terms of us, the Personnel Board, looking at the PSTF report. But there are three important ones. The first overlapping with the communications section, you can see on the comments, with transparency, clarity, and accessibility of personnel policies and procedures. I think it came out in the PSTF work on the survey where employees were concerned they didn't have all the information that they required, and we want to make sure that we support that through the efforts we make as a Personnel Board in communicating.
So your classification plan that you're going to be putting on this next Town Meeting is going to be sort of the legacy one, that it'll be the last one? It won't reflect the GovHR work yet?
It will.
It will.
It has to.
It has to.
But will you have that available by January?
Yep.
They are aware that that's our goal, and we have those deadlines in mind.
Okay.
There will be more information
So we're going to have a fresh classification for this Town Meeting?
Yes.
All happening real fast. Okay, great.
Are you involved in that?
I am.
Well, you certainly should be.
Okay, well, so this is, this is exciting.
Six hours just last week.
I had expected this whole thing to take another calendar year before we would
Don't worry, we'll be busy next year, too.
I'm sure, I'm sure there are all these substantive changes that need to be made in the Personnel Bylaw, which is a whole process.
It's sort of one of the reasons we wanted to present to you tonight, a plan, as opposed to waiting for you to say, why don't you develop a plan?
Right.
And then we're four, we're four weeks or a month behind. I mean, so
Yeah, no, it's just that I would have, I don't know, thought I'd see a draft classification, you know, before it gets sealed in concrete in the warrant, you know?
Yeah.
But, okay.
Well, I, I think I'll defer to the Town Manager on that comment because it's the comping classification we're supporting, but it's really run from
Well, and it is your jurisdiction, so, you know, I'm just meddling as a Select Board. Okay.
We try not to get in the way.
What I can say is that GovHR seems to be a wonderful institution that's really being, been hired all over the country. They're very effective in terms of any questions that we've come up with, certainly. They've been right there to answer them and to move along, understanding the deadlines that are set by the town.
Yeah.
So I have confidence in the, the group that has been hired by Concord to do that work.
I mean, this project is a long time incoming, and like many projects, it is going slower than what we had originally hoped. There's a lot of work being done now, but I, I think ideally, we would have had something, you know, a couple of months sooner, but it's just not happening. This is a project that's involved participation of every single non-union employee in a, in a very detailed way, and we're working
In terms of the content of the work and how to classify it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I think the process is really a terrific one, because when you involve the employees, they will understand what comes out at the end. And they just came to our meeting last week and explained that even at the end, they'll have a forum so that people can say, wait a minute, I'm not sure that's what I wanted to convey to you. And I think that's really important. So we're jumping a bit, but if we look at employee relations, this is a key area for the Personnel Board, I think, has been a stronger area perhaps in the past, as we learned from the Task Force report, where employees and their, their pride and confidence in working for the Town of Concord has waned a bit. And I think that the process that the Town Managers put in place with GovHR to really look and embrace the employees in the process itself has been very important for employee relations. The timelines for addressing employees' concern, we've jumped over to this gray section, is really something that came out of the Personnel Study Task Force as a concern, that they don't feel like they're getting feedback, they don't know where to go for information. And I think through this GovHR process, that, that sets a new line in the sand where they feel really engaged in the process. And, and hopefully that we can build that trust in the Town HR Department. Employee performance feedback methods is number 20 on this chart. I think that is a question about how often and how consistently across departments those are handled as year-end reviews, or how that fits into performance feedback. And that would be something that we would need your guidance, support, both from Town Managers' office and from the Select Board, to understand how we, as a Personnel Board, could support those activities and ensure that there's consistency across the various employee groups, and that they, they feel confident in that consistency. So the employee relations areas is really more about the employee satisfaction and how can we, as a Personnel Board, support that satisfaction increasing? And employee retention, of course, would follow. So I skipped over the human resources aspect, but, you know, there is some, you know, we talked about GovHR, and that's really in there as well. If there are any other questions you have, I'm happy to field them, but I'll stop there.
So, I mean, first of all, I just want to share my appreciation for just this invigorated Personnel Board. I think, you know, the Personnel Study Task Force, I definitely, you know, laid down a set of challenges, and you're responding very quickly and decisively, I think. So those are great things. And I think we just need to keep the momentum going from, from the Personnel Board's perspective and, you know, ways that we can support in terms of trying to keep a Personnel Board that's staffed, for example, be, you know, adequately to be able to hold meetings. It really was right on a, the shoestring for a while, and now it seems like you've got more of infrastructure to make
Right, and let me add that your, your goal is to meet monthly, which hopefully you can get back to, but this board has been meeting weekly for the last few weeks, and it really shows because you took these
Not that you have to keep doing it.
No, no, but to take these 20
Like we do.
These 20 items and, and put them in a structure for us has been really helpful.
Yes. I think the only comment I'd like to sort of add to this is that the Personnel Board was working, I think, hard prior to the Personnel Task Force. So I think, I think it would be unfair, especially to members who have been on the Personnel Board for some time, to think that, oh, well, it wasn't, they weren't doing anything until the Personnel Task Force got involved. And I, I don't find that particular conclusion acceptable.
Okay, no, I don't think it's so much that, it's just that there weren't enough resources, you know, to really do more than what had been happening.
But I think that the, the Study Task Force deserves a lot of credit for focusing on a lot of the issues. And they had, and, and the path that they had to follow was not without obstacles, and they overcame the obstacles. And I think they did a great job, that was a good, good service for everyone.
Well, and if I could add to that, Mr. Dane, I, I think one thing that happened was that it highlighted that the Personnel Board was understaffed. When I joined, there was one, we were down to two until
There were many vacancies.
There were. And now I think tonight you have someone else also being approved, so that's fantastic. Kate joined recently, that's been, been fantastic with her experience. So everyone has a kind of different take on HR and, and how we worked in that space in other roles in our lives. So it's been a very robust discussion at our meetings, and I think that's wonderful. I also think that if you, if you look closely at these, that they're, at these recommendation or comments here, there's, there really is a need for more collaboration for regular meetings with the Select Board. Terry's been super helpful, as, as Bill also mentioned, but us to come to report and get these questions is really helpful. And also with the Town Manager and your office to really understand your strategy about hiring and so forth is going to be so helpful for us to be integrated into a collaborative support for these non-union employees, because that's ultimately what we all want to do, is make sure that we have a very excited and happy employee base. And, you know, as we come across so many things that are coming up for the town the next two years, I think that'll be even more important, that we all band together and make sure that we develop a really good working environment.
But it's important to have people on the Personnel Board be effective and to have people who want to serve on it, for them to feel that they, they can accomplish something, and they are, and they're not being frustrated in their work.
That's a good point.
Good comment.
Sure, go ahead, Mary.
Thanks. I know that a lot of your work is focusing on compensation and benefits, benefits such as leave and things like that. And I'm wondering, as, if you look broader at HR policies, have you thought about addressing things like professional development or training of staff?
I think that's a critical area. One of the problems that I think we have currently is the lack of information. We don't know what the Town provides, supports, funds in any areas such as training and development. So we, first of all, have to do an inventory, and we have to understand what in fact is being provided, how many people are involved. That's really a, a key and critical place. Development, career development, we have no idea, because we just haven't had time to explore what activities are involved by the Town in career development discussions or career development activities.
Or training.
The reason, the reason people, many people leave is because they don't see a future in the organization or department or whatever. That may be true, it may not be true. I mean, but we, we, the Personnel Board, need that information, and these are, those are two good examples, Mary, of our need to focus, and we will, on getting the data.
Any other questions for the Personnel Board? Because I know that we also have the Personnel Director that has her response.
The only thing, Matt, and we don't have to do this now, but the questions I had at the beginning, which was, does the Select Board agree with the, the concept, the plan? Does the Select Board confirm with the, the objectives that we've set? And who is, you know, who do you see as the one who's going to manage this? We don't have to do that right now, but I think it's, those are questions that at some point in time
Well, first of all, I think that you put together a sound and ambitious plan. And actually, I was looking through the, the bylaw changes, so there's extensive, I mean, for, for the 2023 Town Meeting, it's not going to be just typos. This is significant new policy already. So take a look at, it's actually in
Which document is that?
It's in this, the other document. So the preliminary, the potential amendments to Personnel Bylaw, last revised 1129, and I mean, look at how extensive.
And that was just essentially a, a list of possibilities.
Okay, so this is potential.
Potential, that's a good word. That is potential.
But it does say 2023, so
And it could be. I mean, some of them will be 2023.
Is some of that policy, the Personnel Policies, or is that all bylaw? I don't have that
So it has some of them that are explicitly saying, review bylaw language to determine updates, but the others are, you know, have concrete actions.
We identified about nine very specific common, some of which you might classify as housekeeping articles, where we saw that there was a common agreement between what the Task Force recommended and what staff agreed could be cleaned up, if you will. Willing to look at. So we started with nine, but think of those as amendments, not as warrant articles. There's also a lot of placeholders in there. We want to make sure that we can cross-reference our initiatives on, maybe longevity might be a good example of one. This is our initial board, we're hoping that we can condense that as we go through that list with the Personnel Board and with the Town Manager. We're really just, that's just sort of the worst-case scenario, there might be 21 amendments.
I don't consider it worst, I mean, it's great to make progress.
Maybe most aggressive.
But, yeah, so, so I also could imagine one warrant article that would roll off all of these amendments.
That's right.
Yeah.
We're talking about three, and they're the same ones you see in every year. That's the
Classification, sure, that's all separate.
And they're all going to be built in within those three articles.
But like new, yeah, language for
And that's why we're meeting weekly.
Yeah, I see, I see.
We'll continue that until we get this right and, and the December 16 deadline is met.
Great, okay, thank you. So I think the answer is affirmative in terms of what you all say, my fellow board members, so do you endorse this plan?
Yes, so we're moving in the right direction.
Absolutely.
I think it's very, very ambitious, and to get all these things done in six months that say, hi, you know, it's very ambitious. But I, I think we need to be ambitious because we're behind and we need to catch up, so
Should we plan to meet together again in March, let's say?
Sure, that would be great.
Yeah, let's do that.
Checkpoint discussion.
Somebody should put it on the, on the calendar, for sure.
Put that as an action item. Anything else from your side?
Maybe it's good for Amy to present. I, I do want to talk about my page seven of seven briefly.
Page seven.
Seven of seven, which
I think it might be
I've only got six of six on this.
The last page, six of six.
I was going to say seven of seven.
Okay.
Part D, the Personnel Board comments?
Yeah. Personnel Board comments, yeah. I think we can, I can wait for that after.
Okay, all right, Amy, can we get your response to the Personnel Task Force?
Well, thank you for giving me this response. Yeah, it's obviously something that I am very interested in. I, I very much appreciate the fact that so many employees have engaged in the process of giving feedback, and that the Task Force gathered that process and gathered that feedback, and that the Personnel Board has been so involved now in, in addressing that. It's really very helpful, and I appreciate all of that. Feedback can be tough to hear, I'll admit that, but it's critical to our success, and I'm really dedicated to working with everybody to, to achieve the goals that have been being discussed. Just to kind of backtrack a little bit, I am, I'm Amy Foley, the Human Resources Director. I've worked for the Town for over 32 years, starting in a role of a Personnel Assistant when the department was about five years old, and then in more mid, mid-level management at, at the, in the department, and the Director for approximately 14 years with that title. In that time, I've seen considerable and exciting change in Concord. It's amazing how much this town has continued to expand its services and grow and done really amazing things. When the department was established in 1985, there were about 210 regular positions and 75 temporary and limited status positions. And so the regular positions, those that are, you know, benefits eligible, has increased by over 50% since that time. We're up to about 330 budgeted positions, and that 75 temporary and limited employees, we have about 350 people on payroll every year, in addition to the 330 that I said that are just the regular. So, you know, in a year, we have 650, 700 people on payroll coming in all kinds of capacities. That's a pretty large expansion. We have, the services have expanded greatly, too. So we've gone into different businesses, as you know, broadband, we've brought in in-house facility service specialists, things that used to be contracted, recreation, we, you know, the White Pond, the lifeguards, the BEA Center, the V's Visitor Center, Minuteman Media, videographers, traffic officers, so just quite a change in the workforce. So I just wanted to give you some of that, some of that background. The, the HR Department is both very supportive of, and, and looking to be involved in what the, the Personnel Board just went over. I think that was a, a great and a helpful summary of the details that we want to look at, and it's helpful to hear what the priorities are. But we haven't just been sitting back and waiting for that information to do anything. So we have also been working with the Town Manager to define priorities. And so, you know, the main things, the key, key priorities And so, you know, the main things, the key priorities right now that we're focused on are the classification, excuse me, classification and compensation study, Personnel Bylaw amendments, employee policies and procedures, and employee relations. Obviously, we've got work there to do on communications and trust. I'm happy to go into some detail on what we've been doing, if that is helpful to you. I also want to respect your time. I have provided a document that you received, I believe you have it this evening, that's a memo that summarizes those details and includes a chart that talks about some of those strategic priorities. So I guess I'm looking to know whether your preference is that we look at that now, or whether it's something that you'd like to come back to perhaps in March or in another method.
Well, I think one thing, you know, that was on my mind, just having read the Personnel Study Task Force Report, was the most troubling aspect of that report was kind of just the, their claim that there weren't job descriptions that were kept up to date there, you know, with the classification we already had, that policies were out of date or were not readily available. And so it was not clear that an employee had the tools, either the, their information about their job or about policies to do their job. And that seems to me to be very, very basic. Now, I don't know, you know, whether, how accurate those allegations were, but it just, among all the things I saw in the report, it just seemed like, wow, well, that's the most basic aspect to running a Personnel Department.
Sure, sure. You know, I think, Matt, I can't say that there aren't concerns or areas for improvement. Absolutely, there are. And definitely in more recent years, more focus has been given to the growth and the development of the positions and other areas than the policies, and we absolutely need to focus on those. There are some things like the, about the availability or the knowledge of policies that, you know, is good feedback to hear. I don't know all of where it came from. We have, we do orientations with employees. We annually send them an advisory of where the procedures are on the website. We tell them how they can get copies of them. We've been rolling out more systems for that, but, you know, but some of it, you know, is consorting to here, and we need to explore that. I also think it's been difficult to work within the structure that we've had. There's some, you know, confusion between the administrative policies and procedures and the personnel policies and procedures and the bylaw, and there's a lot of work to do to make it something that's more understandable. And so we've been spending a lot of time, we've been looking at the policy framework and trying to start back and saying, okay, so going forward, what's going to be a system that people can understand so that they can find those policies and we can turn it into a handbook?
And then I would just say, when I look at the action items on the action plan, one of the things I would encourage is to make the action items concrete in terms of being able to, you know, at the end of doing them, you know, to be able to clearly say whether or not they've been completed, the so-called SMART goals, if you ever heard of those.
Right, right.
I'm sorry, are you talking to the HR Department or the Personnel Board?
Yes, I am, I am, the Personnel Department. So that there's the strategic action items part of that memo, of this memo, the blue and white chart.
Personnel Board did not have access to that.
Of course, I'm not talking to the Personnel Board, I'm talking to.
Okay, I just, because I don't have access to that, I don't know.
Okay, so our Personnel Director, that these, these action items are, you know, continue ongoing efforts to strengthen the town's ability to engage this workforce through ongoing responsiveness and communication. It's very difficult to kind of pin that down, and that's just one example of many of these. I would just rephrase these in terms of concrete actions to be taken so that we could then come back to this later and say, yep, you know, making progress.
Right, and also, I'd like to see, there's a lot of them underway, which is excellent, but to have an estimated timeframe, so perhaps when the Personnel Board comes back in March, Amy, you could come back also and say, oh, okay, this one's going to take longer than, you know, we're revising it, and this one is finished now, and, you know, give us an update on what's been completed at that point.
Yep, absolutely. So this was a first pass to, to start looking at, we were gathering the Select Board's goals, the Town Manager's goals, the HR goals, trying to put them together, listening to the task force and starting to lay it out in a plan, but that is good feedback. We didn't consider this to be the final. There's actually some other layers behind here that we, that we expect to work with. So absolutely, we'll continue to refine, thank you.
Any other questions for the Personnel Director?
I'll just comment that, you know, this is probably hot off the press, so I appreciate that, and the feedback you've been given tonight will be helpful to incorporate. This also, it may be an issue of timing, but is the expectation that this would also be shared with the Personnel Board for their comments?
Absolutely, it was a matter of timing, and so they are receiving it.
Copy of the memo.
I thought they actually, I thought there, yeah, I'm sorry, I thought there were copies there, and I can put it up on the screen, but we absolutely, that's all this coming in now, so it was for this presentation. Yes, we'll continue to look at.
Anything else for this section?
I want to make the one comment.
Oh, you're, you're page six.
Page six, right. The, there are a couple items there, there are a couple items there, but I want to, I'm going to focus on the second one, which was the employee survey. I really think that I would encourage the Town Manager to have an employee survey guidance document that spells out the do's and the don'ts of a survey. You cannot tell employees that the survey is going to be confidential, and then the information, the survey gets released to certain people in town who have no relationship to the task force.
Right.
That is, that is unacceptable, in my, in my opinion. So one way to get around that, because you'd think that there would be some common sense and good judgment that would be exercised as you, as one went along, is a guidance document of some sort that in the future can be referenced and referred to.
Well, I think it's just this notion of, I mean, if you say something, I mean, you need to have, everything, of course, is public information except for personnel information, right? Because we are municipality. But that said, there are ways to treat information that should be consistent throughout, not just for a survey, but for all, all kinds of activities.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks everyone for your contributions this evening. I think it's great progress and look forward to meeting together in about four months.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Now to the Housing Production Plan, and thanks, I keep thanking groups for their patience, it keeps slipping away, yeah, so I really do appreciate your forbearance. So this is our 740 item at 835.
Wait.
That means we came quite early.
So it gets to.
Uh huh, not Personnel Director. Is that a big deal?
Hopefully.
There were, there was other reasons.
Yeah, that too.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Marc Charasmas, and Director of Planning and Land Management for the Town of Concord, and with Mira Liz Rust from the Regional Housing Services Office, and Laura Smead, our Planning Consultant with J.M. Goldson. We're here tonight to discuss with you the latest draft of the Housing Production Plan and to hear your thoughts and comments on this draft. For those who may be wondering, a Housing Production Plan is a community's proactive plan for developing affordable housing by creating goals and strategies to enable the town to meet its affordable housing needs in a manner consistent with Mass. General Law Chapter 40B, that statute and the regulations, as well as consistent with local needs. This plan is required by the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development to be renewed every five years, which gives the town an opportunity to look back to see what was accomplished and what wasn't, look at where we are today and where we, where there is a need for housing, and look to the future to consider strategies that might help the community achieve at least 10% affordable housing, consistent with that local need. So to help the community with this plan and the planning process required, the town has been working with the Regional Housing Services Office and J.M. Goldson since early spring 2022. And with that, I'm going to turn the discussion over to Laura and Liz. So who's first? Who's on first?
The first thing, oh, thank you. So the first thing I want to do is just some kudos, really, some acknowledgements, and thank you to the Select Board and the Planning Board and the Concord Municipal Housing Trust, the Concord Housing Development Corporation, and the Housing Production Plan Committee, and of course, the staff, the municipal staff and the Regional Housing Services staff for all of their hard work and help putting together this plan. The objectives for tonight are really to get any specific final feedback you have on the final draft of the Housing Production Plan, including the needs, the goals, the strategies, the action plan, answer any questions you have, determine if you're satisfied that the goal to include diversity, equity, and inclusion throughout the document is satisfied. We did receive a comment this, late this afternoon from the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee.
Oh, just this afternoon, okay.
Yes, so that will be included in a redline draft, along with any comments you have tonight for.
Okay, and then we had a little bit of public comment over the weekend that I thought was significant.
Yes, agreed, yep. So that's being incorporated, was working on it today. So really, the next steps are the Housing Production Plan Committee is expected to recommend their approval of the plan at their next meeting, December 12. The Planning Board is expected to vote at their next meeting on December 13. Their feedback has already been discussed and incorporated into the version that you have already seen tonight, and the hope is that you will vote your approval on December 19th if you feel ready to do so. So with that, I want to talk a little bit about the engagement that went into putting this plan together. There were five focus groups that happened in April that had 22 participants, the Community Forum in June, the first one had 45 participants, a community survey ran from April to June, and that had 442 participants. A second community forum was held in September that had 35 participants, and a third public presentation was given in November that also approximately had about 35 participants. So altogether, there was about 579, we call them points of participation, if you will, because of course, some were repeated, yes, exactly.
I'm guilty of that.
So that's great, and just a reflection of, you know, the, all of the public interest and feedback that we've incorporated into the plan so far. And so with that, I am interested in any feedback you have or changes or questions on the, maybe we can start with the goals first, or I'll take your lead.
Okay, I guess I was zooming ahead to the strategies, but, you know, goals.
Sure, yeah.
Anyone have questions about the goals or comments? Because I think the goals have.
Yeah, I emailed a lot of my comments, which have already been incorporated.
Yeah, I'm impressed at the speed of comments being incorporated. I've seen that now. I do see a new strategy though, or at least I think it's new, maybe I overlooked it before. I had a question about it. But still, to the goals, anybody going once?
My questions are on strategies.
Okay, questions are on strategies, we're all into strategy here.
Okay.
Go ahead, Terry.
Okay, well, first of all, I apologize for not emailing these in. So number three, this is a real simple one, I think, where it says, such as 2229 Street, Main Street, 740 Elm Street, I think it should say, and the Peabody School. I just think we should consider all of them.
Oh, well, just, okay.
That's, that's an easy one. And then I do wonder why, I see that two of them have been crossed out, I think. There was an old number seven, strengthen the accessory dwelling unit bylaw.
I'm the responsible.
All right. And number 21, explore opportunities for support infrastructure like sidewalks, bike lanes, and last mile connections to transit. So I was just wondering why those two were removed.
Well, I was going to say, number seven has been incorporated already. We've already accomplished that, so.
Wait, that's what I was hoping.
Already in the bylaw.
Yay.
And with regards to the infrastructure, that was incorporated, we didn't want to just leave it by itself, so we incorporated it into another one of the strategies, and I'm trying to remember which one it was.
Yeah, I believe it was related to the Smart Growth Location Strategy, so locating housing where there are community resources and other.
Very good.
You know, that, that, the MBTA bill passed, I think, yesterday?
Really, it passed yesterday?
It did pass, yes. And I didn't know with what particular provisions, whether it had the ones about allowing a certain percentage to be affordable or not. The original one did not.
I think that it provided for a town could require up to 10%.
Another comment I have, I don't know how relevant it is, it just strikes me as being very strange in the diversity statistics that the residents of the two prisons in town are counted toward diversity, because they're not, although they are physically present, they are not members of the community.
Our prison population is calculated in our census, and so that's where we wanted to, I guess, highlight the fact that even though it looks like we might have a more diverse community than one might think, it's because of our prison population in some cases.
Well, but I think that, but by counting them, you are, you're implying that the percentages are, those percentages of our population that include the residents of the two prisons, so I think it's misleading.
The census is the only source you can cite, really.
Well, but then it's meaningless.
Well, and so that's why we note how much is in the prison, so that you can, so we sort of do that math, so we bring both those sources together, the Department of Corrections data as well as the census, but it's, the census data is important to present as, as recorded.
Well, I'd just say, it's qualified in the narrative in.
I understand, but it's still included in the percentages rather than not being included. Just an hour, I also thought there was a really striking number that the 17% of the population is men living alone, without a family.
Men?
That's, that's of the total population, 17%.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't find where that one was incorporated, about the sidewalks and bike lanes and everything.
Well.
Probably just not seeing it here.
It is, but we don't have, it's there.
It might need to be a little more specific or a little more broad to address that concern, but I know that we did intend to incorporate it.
It says, number seven, continue to promote redevelopment in areas where goods and services are available and where sidewalks, bike lanes, and public transportation exist.
Okay, well, that's kind of different than creating new ones, which was the old goal.
So you're saying that rather than just where it exists, is just you want to ensure that.
Well, yeah, this said, explore opportunities for strategic support infrastructure for new housing.
Maybe that's the idea, is to maybe not be passive with regards to that availability of the infrastructure, but also be proactive about the possibility of development.
Where, it became a question is, how does that promote affordable housing?
That's what I thought you were going to say. It's an infrastructure piece, which I think is really the purview and domain of public works, and so.
But it creates more livable affordable housing, I guess.
Correct, and so that what we might do is, is expand that, that section to talk about the infrastructure required to promote a more livable.
You know, as needed, develop the infrastructure or something. So I had a question. So I had a question on strategy number five, and I'm just curious, is that a new one? The one about, you know, mending zoning to reduce minimum lot sizes or furniture requirements?
That was in the original document, yes. You overlooked, you may have overlooked it.
Okay, well, so when I brought this idea up before, what our town planner had pointed out to me is that Concord is already built out. And so, you know, it's very difficult now to superimpose, you know, a smaller zoning lot size onto an already built community, you know, and she was saying that it would be very messy implementation, I guess, is maybe a paraphrase, but it's a difficult one.
I think it's just consider is the phrase that was added. We note the number of lots that are, that-- This came, yeah.
I mean, and it's only applicable for new undeveloped land if you're going to use subdivisions, right? I mean, I guess you could get more density out of a PRD, but it also encourages really tight subdivisions, right?
Right, well, I think it also affects for dimensional compliance for existing smaller homes who may say want to--
Have fewer noncompliant--
Put on a small addition, let's say they want to include an accessory dwelling unit or something in their home. If you have a lot of your town that is not dimensionally compliant with what zoning is now because of the historic nature of zoning--
We do.
That means that a lot, every, what, every, every house that has, existing home that has to come in, has to come in for a special permit or has to come in for a variance or something. And so it does help ease some of the burden on your zoning board of appeals, as well as enable it to be a little bit more straightforward for houses that are fitting more of that historical dimensions, I guess, that are in your current bylaws.
Right, well, and indeed, what we want to encourage is smaller housing units, which smaller lots combined with the floor area ratio could yield that, yeah.
And we could also think about it in terms of the residential compound, was initially viewed as a concept where you could have five, five houses clustered on a single lot. And actually, if you look to strategy number 10, we talk about evaluating, expanding the strategy further to consider changes in area zone for single-family homes to allow two or four homes on one property. So each property could be reexamined in a new way without necessarily messing with the zoning. So there's some, I think we need to look at, the beauty of GIS is that we can look at frontage, we can look at area, and we can see where these things might, might work.
And then, I guess I didn't prevail in my comments about duplexes in all zones, but I'm just one person.
Well, you can certainly get more housing by having multifamily housing--
In all zones.
On a single lot than you can by allowing smaller lot size.
No, you--
It's the number 10.
Number 10.
Did you not want it?
Strengthen by law to allow--
No, no, but my comment was, I was not in favor of all zones.
Oh.
I don't like the idea of duplexes and double A, for example. I just don't think we have any adequate zoning tools to prevent them from being out of scale and creating other problems. It's raw, because we don't have infrastructure for walkability or anything in those areas. So I, I'm not in favor of duplexes in those zones. So that's my opinion. Yes, Mary?
I have two little comments. And one is, and this was brought up at the trails meeting the other day, we learned that Bedford didn't prevail in getting the, their portion of the Reformatory Branch Trail paved up to the Concord Town Line. And I think it was the, Tanya sent me an email asking if we could change the language. And I know you had an email correspondence, but I don't see that changed.
No, we haven't made it.
It was too recent.
It came on over the weekend.
Great, so you'll make that?
Yes.
Great, good, that's all.
Other questions, comments?
So I've already provided a lot of my comments earlier, so thank you for that.
So how, I'm sorry.
Let it continue, yeah.
How is this going to affect the situation we're going to face when the census figures come out in the spring?
I don't think it, again, the safe harbor is not going to be relevant for Concord, because the, we're not too far enough below our threshold to be able to execute a plan that in the first tranche wouldn't already get us above 10%. So we, the amount of increment that we need for the 10% is less than the safe harbor amount we'd have to achieve. So we just need to create as many units as we can. I don't know else to put it, but yeah.
So I think that having an approved plan, if you create 35 units, that's the number for Concord, it would create a one-year safe harbor.
Right.
But as Matt says, if you create 35 units, it would probably be enough to be over the 10%, which is a multi-year, you know--
We have no prospect, we have no prospect of creating more than five or six units over the next two years.
Right, but it may only take like eight to get over 10%. We don't know yet.
So, exactly. So it's, I think it's valuable to set a framework for housing over this next period and the community conversation that it's generated and the input in terms of where Concord is for housing and going forward. I think that's where its primary value is.
Well, and then even if we can get the eight to get over 10%, that doesn't mean we're done. We've got more to do.
Right, so I have two follow-up questions about that. So if we're, say, you know, if we're below 10% when, when this comes out in May, but then let's say two years from now, we catch up somehow, best case, I don't know, then we don't have to wait 10 years for the next census, right? Once we get to 10%, we're okay with it.
Yeah, if you get to 10% for the next 10 years, or for--
Till 2030.
Yeah.
Right, but I mean, if we don't qualify this May, but we qualify, let's say, in 2025, then--
Yeah, so all the 2020 census does is it establishes the denominator.
Right, right, okay.
And then we're working on the numerator.
All right, all right.
By creating the--
And as soon as--
As long as we get above the 10%--
Okay, great, okay. My other follow-up question is, so if the Select Board votes this tonight or December 19th, what's the next steps after that?
So, so I think as Laura mentioned, the path to the 19th, right, so that we would come back with the, because the comment period ends today, so we've gotten comments all the way through today, so we'll make those. We plan to make those and have another version ready for Friday, and that will be the one that will sort of shop around for approval. So when you, you're the last adoptees, so you adopt the plan, and then it goes to DHCD for their final approval.
Right, so do we adopt it on December 19?
December 19, yes, that would be the plan.
We're doing a review now, but on the 19th, it's hopefully mostly ceremonial.
Right. Well, so we would ask tonight that if you have any comments to this plan--
We make sure we've incorporated it and need the feedback.
That's why we're here tonight, to get any comments on this plan.
And then after DHCD approves, then it just goes on our website?
Then it goes on the website, right, exactly.
That's our document for Friday.
And that's our document, yes, exactly.
And then what happens?
Mary?
Yeah.
And then, and then we, we work to, we have an implementation, you know, a group that we would work to implement this Housing Production Plan. We've talked about housing coordination in terms of implementing this and taking a look at some of the short-term strategies and embarking on those, and I think that there was some interest from this group last time we talked about that in reviewing that on a periodic basis.
Yes.
But the big, the really big unknown is funding, isn't it? Because we don't know what's going to happen to the land transfer tax.
There are a number of unknowns. There's, you know, resources in land, there's money, there's private developers, so housing happens through all of those mechanisms. But yes, the, certainly that brings in a lot of money for locally funded housing, of course.
I have a comment. On Saturday at the town meeting preview, we saw the Planning Board come up with an article to hopefully make it more, provide some incentive to developers to build more affordable units, or a different combination of affordable units, depending on how, but the intent was so that it would be an attractive business plan to developers to come in, and we would benefit by getting more affordable units, right? So that sounded like a good strategy to me. Is that a strategy that we should be taking seriously? And by that, I mean actually talking to developers and asking them, what, you know, what can we do to make it more beneficial or make it work for you? Is that a strategy, or is that heresy?
Yeah, it is a strategy. I know that when, when it's, when we've simply put it in as, you're required to put in 20% units, they don't get built. And I think, Matt, you commented on that on Saturday.
What strategy is it exactly?
It's four.
Do you think 20--
We give that to the Housing Trust, but it could be other parties to negotiate increased affordable units and privately develop projects.
That's what that means, okay.
You think 20% of nothing is better than 10% of nothing?
There are any number of ways of doing it.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Any other comments?
I just want to say, you know, this is a massive effort, and I think the outreach to get multiple comments from multiple parties has been very important, and it shows in this document to date. Yep, so I look forward to seeing the additional comments that are going to be incorporated.
I think we agree that we've gotten any number of comments and feel that the document is better for all the feedback and the time that the, that everyone's taken to review it and to offer their input.
Yeah, so now comes the actual hard part, which is creating real housing.
Right.
The plan is the easy part, unfortunately. Okay.
Do we have regular meetings scheduled with the Affordable Housing Trust to talk about that, or what are we going to do?
What's the strategy?
Wait, it's right here, we have it. It's strategy number-- Wait, wait, where is it? Where is it? We have it right here.
Yeah.
It's towards the, towards the back.
I think we're, we're up for it.
Strategy number 22.
Okay.
Continue integrated housing collaboration through the Concord Housing Roundtable and clarify the roles and responsibilities for housing production.
So the Housing Roundtable--
Well, the roundtable doesn't include the Select--
That's, yeah, but maybe the Select Board needs a seat at the roundtable.
Great, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I think that's it, and--
As is the Planning Department, correct?
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, what's that implementation group that you were speaking of, Liz?
No, I think that that's what I was really talking about.
That's the Housing Production Planner. It's sort of like they had the Housing Production Plan Steering Committee, this is kind of the backside of that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Great.
All right, thank you. And thanks again for your patience and your work.
And for showing up here, it really makes a difference.
And waiting all that time.
Yeah, okay. So now we're going to move to voting our recommendations for special town meeting warrant articles, as well as to vote our recommendations for the special town meeting consent calendar for special town meeting in January. So--
Okay.
We have five articles.
Do you want to ask if there's any discussion, or just before you do all these motions?
Well, I think we just, I think, first of all, people have had, we've had our special town meeting hearing, I think we've had numerous discussions of various points. So I don't know if we need detailed discussions of these. I think, let me just quickly just iterate them. Article one about the fossil, I mean, about the, yeah, fossil fuel free--
Right.
Re-upping that before the legislature, everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Could I have a motion?
Motion to move to recommend favorable action for Article one, fossil fuel infrastructure, confirm authorization to apply for participation in fossil fuel free demonstration project to the special town meeting warrant.
Okay.
Now, we don't--
Yep.
Second?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the second one, which is, is it the transfer fee or the--
The transfer fee.
It's a transfer fee.
Yep.
So any discussion on the transfer fee? Nope, okay.
Move to recommend favorable action for Article two, reauthorize special legislation petition, real estate transfer fee for affordable housing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Next one is for the building permit surcharge, requesting our petition for that.
Move to recommend favorable action for Article three, reauthorize special legislation petition, building permit fee surcharge for affordable housing.
Do I have a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The fourth one, which is about moving funds to the Housing Reserve Fund of the Community Preservation Committee that were previously set aside for Junction Village, Christopher Heights. Any discussion on that? Nope, okay.
Move to recommend favorable action for Article four, Community Preservation Act, Community Housing Reserve Fund.
Second?
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and then the final one, which is to authorize another $7.2 million of borrowing beyond the, outside the levy limit to support additional costs for the middle school project. Any discussion on that one? Okay, do I have a motion?
Move to recommend favorable action for Article five, Middle School Building Project.
Do I have a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
And all against? One nay, and--
We all vote aye.
Okay, four to one. Okay, so next item is the consent calendar. So we had a memo from, or a note from the town moderator recommending, suggesting her choices for what we might want to put on the consent calendar, but it's up to us. And what she was suggesting was that Articles one and four would be good candidates for that, that, you know, there wasn't any appreciable feedback at the special town meeting hearings, and that, you know, the first one, of course, is just reiterating with very minor changes what was previously proposed. The second one takes money to a, from a project that is no longer moving forward to a place where it could be redeployed, so those are very straightforward. The, she, however, did not want Articles two or three to be on the consent calendar. Her view was that there were enough substantive changes, so for example, the higher threshold for where the, you know, fees start to kick in from $600,000 to $1 million, there's a whole new trust fund now to, for the money to go to and all of that. So she also felt, you know, that there, it had been some time since this had been passed, and so I think to raise awareness, just that we are trying to raise these funds would be worthwhile. So what are your feelings, board members, about--
I agree with that.
Everybody okay with that staying off the consent calendar? Clearly, you know, a group of citizens can take anything off the consent calendar at town meeting if they wish, but, okay. And then I don't think that we need to even consider that Article five, we got the consent calendar, that's the whole point of having a special town meeting, so--
So actually--
So can we just have a single motion?
We can, but I'm just thinking that it's the moderator, I just remembered, it's the moderator's decision what goes on the consent calendar.
Apparently, we recommend--
All right, we'll recommend.
I think, isn't that what it states?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Move, move to recommend Article one, fossil fuel infrastructure, confirm authorization to apply for participation in fossil fuel free demonstration project to the consent calendar, and Article four, Community Preservation Act, Community Housing Reserve Fund to the consent calendar.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we're all done with that. So, status update on annual town meeting scheduled for April 30.
So we actually just included this on the agenda, and in the event that the board wanted to have any discussion about anything that came out of Saturday's meeting, or really anything related to the warrant. So there are a lot of standard articles that are drafted by staff, typically the finance department, I'm actually working with finance on that to make sure all of those articles get submitted in a timely manner. There isn't anything that's out of the ordinary, does include the middle school stabilization fund article, as well as really just all of the standard operating articles.
Carrie, do you know how much that, the stabilization fund will, how much we can get from free cash for the stabilization fund? Do you have an estimate?
So I, it really depends on whether or not we want to-- So I, it really depends on whether or not we want to keep the $1 million of free cash appropriation to reduce the property tax. That is something that is standard every year. It's plugged into.
Right, the guideline.
The guideline right now. I think that needs some further discussion. The Board of Assessors, I believe, is meeting later this week, and they are going to take up a further discussion about whether or not they would release additional overlay. I would hope they would do that. They currently have a balance of about $2 million. And as a part of the fiscal '23 tax rate certification process, there's another slightly over half a million dollars that would be going in. So they should be able to release. I think.
Even though they had anticipated maybe more abatements this year than usual, because, or at least more basement, abatement applications.
Application, for sure. So I'm hoping they would consider a half a million or $750,000. And then we'll take another look at free cash. It's still not yet certified. But we would want to talk further to the Finance Committee about that $1 million for property tax relief, because we're not looking to pull anything for affordable housing. Maybe, maybe there's an opportunity to do both, the $1 million plus something for the stabilization fund. The goal, I think, is.
Think, are we one and a half short?
If you take the million out of the.
We're one and a half short.
If you take the million out from what we typically do every year, wouldn't that mean that the property tax increase would go up more than the guideline?
Yes.
Yeah, it does.
Goes up earlier, yeah.
So I think we feel we have at least two budget years, two fiscal years to get to the $5 million in the stabilization fund. And we're at three and a half now.
Okay. So that might be the better way.
So I just had a comment about Saturday. It seemed like we had a very short meeting. And I, I think a number of us were wondering, you know, why we were having that meeting. But it turned out to be really productive to hear what was out there. And there were quite a few articles missing. So I guess we want to just make sure that everybody knows that the articles are due. For example, I don't know if the 2025 Committee is going to put in an article. Are you planning to do that?
For the annual town meeting?
Right, for the $2 million you were talking about.
I don't know what the number is.
Right.
The answer is yes, it's for some amount.
Yeah. And see, this is, I think, the issue is that the goal of that meeting is to kind of get a heads up as to, here's what's coming. And certainly, we always know that the town, the school budgets and the capital articles are coming and the classification actions. But beyond that, there are all of these things that, such as the 2025 expenses, that I don't think that citizens are necessarily aware are headed our way. And so the, the point of having such a meeting is to get the stuff on the table to the extent that it's knowable. And realizing that, yeah, there's still time. I mean, we just opened the warrant at the meeting, but that, you know, it still helps in the planning.
Right. I'm wondering what else is out there that we don't know about.
That's right. I mean, I've heard inklings about the schools proposing a new capital article. So, you know.
Maybe we need another news and notices or something that, you know, we want draft articles in by the 16th.
I mean, even this transfer for the stabilization fund is an example of something that really should be part of the town meeting preview meeting. So anyway, I, you know, Terry and I did discuss, well, do we even, we're not statutorily required to have this meeting. We could just open the warrant and call it a day. But I think that, in theory, it's supposed to benefit the moderator, who wasn't even in attendance this year, but, as well as the other boards and committees, to be able to coordinate their efforts for smoother running annual town meetings. So.
I think, I think this meeting, this type of meeting is always easier when you're not also talking about a special town meeting.
Yes.
It has gotten a lot more attention in past years.
It also struck us, it seems to be happening earlier than usual.
It, it's, this is earlier than last year. But no, this meeting has typically been the first Saturday in December.
So we are back on schedule.
Yeah, I think, I think, again, it's just difficult when you're running two town meetings at the same time.
Okay. Any other comments for this discussion? Okay. So we're ready for committee nominations.
Okay, John Coleman of 65 Central Street to the White Pond Task Force for a term to expire December 2023 upon completion of the final report to the Select Board.
And?
Peter Blau of 135 Partridge Lane to the Conservation Restriction Stewardship Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2025.
Thanks. And now to committee appointments.
Move to correctly, correctively appoint Stanley Lux of 165 Indian Spring Road to the Pollinator Advisory Committee from June 1st, 2020 through May 31st, 2023. And move to correctively appoint Arthur Fulman of 64 Nersnak Hill Road for a second term to the Financial Audit Advisory Committee from April 30th, 2021 through May 31st, 2024. Move to correctively appoint William Ratchek of 64 Rollingwood Lane for a second term from April 30th, 2021 through May 31st, 2024, and appoint Joe Emmerich of 611 Old Bedford Road for a term to expire April 30th, 2025 to the Personnel Board. And move to appoint Alyssa Brown of 5 Concord Green Unit 1 to the White Pond Task Force for a term to expire December 2023 following the completion of the final report to the Select Board.
Second to all.
All right. Yes, Linda.
Discussion.
Sure.
You know, over the last couple of meetings, we've had a number of corrective actions. And, you know, I anticipate that from time to time, we do have, you know, a couple of them come up. I'm just wondering if there's.
This is the effect of the cleanup efforts that I think Lori Austin's been doing.
That's right. Exactly.
So this is actually good news. Hopefully, it's a one-time wave.
It just, you know, it seems, I guess it's unusual that this amount of cleanup has been required.
Well, yeah. Well, we've had.
I think it's just my position has created a lot of challenges.
That's good. And then, related to this, before we vote on this, is that I would hope we, and I know it's easier said than done, that we continue to explore new ways to reach out to people, to volunteer for committee assignments. And I know that that's a process, takes a while. But we need everybody to support us in that process so that we can get some new voices and new talent, new people.
But we're starting now to get people who are applying for positions and having to tell them that the committees are full, and to let them know that we're going to keep, keep them on our list, but they should stay in touch with us, you know.
But the list is still pretty long of committees that have.
I'm not sure that that list is accurate. But the point is, I know that, for instance, for a number of committees, we have actually more, more applicants than we can appoint, which is good.
That's a good move, and hopefully.
Means that we have some choice.
And also, in the last six months or 12 months, we've had a lot of new names, a lot of new people have come in.
It's all, it's all terrific. And I recognize it's a process. And I know that we're trying to see if there's other open vacancies that they might be either interested or have the skills to contribute. So.
I mean, the Personnel Board was a good example, because for quite a long time, they could not, they were, you know, there were vacancies on that committee that were not being filled.
Yeah, and now we just have another appointment tonight. So that's great.
So the DEI Committee is, Commission is one group that I would particularly point out needs to help with this effort. So thank you.
All right. So did I get a second on this?
I seconded all.
Okay.
Second, second to all, not second to none.
So any other discussion before we vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So now it's a liaison report. Who would like to make the liaison report?
I'll go.
I don't have my notes. I'll have to remember. I already mentioned the Trails Committee, where the, we learned that Bedford, for the second time, turned down a proposal to pave the reformatory branch. So that's consistent. Bedford is, is consistent with what Concord voted at our last town meeting as far as what we want to see for the future of the reformatory branch, Terry, at least in the short term. The second thing I went to, the Recreation Commission, was held at BD Center. It was at 6 o'clock at night. And you go there at 6 o'clock at night, and the place is really busy. It's full. It's, it's really nice. Having said that, the BD Center's got a few challenges. It's got new management. It's got some issues with some equipment, some issues with Communication with its members. They changed, and they changed their dates opening from, they used to be open every, every day except for 6:00. And now they've changed that. So now they're going to be closed on the days that town employees have off. So they're, they're making some changes with their dates. So that was the Rec Commission. So there's some things that still need to happen with the BD Center, and they'll be here after the New Year. We can talk to them.
That's right. So we were planning to have them discuss their strategic plan.
Right, right. And then the third thing is, is that I went to a symposium this morning with the MWRA, which is the, I don't know what it stands for, but it's the Regional Water. Water Resources. Right, it was.
Authority or something.
Right. It was that four-hour symposium they had this morning. And the point of the symposium was, is that given that a lot of municipalities and water districts are facing the PFAS problem with water, drinking water, the quality of drinking water, a lot of towns are looking at, what are they going to do, how expensive that is to meet some of those requirements. And they're only going to get more strict. So the MWRA has opened their arms to communities. They've lowered their, they've actually reduced their sign up fee. There used to be a very expensive sign up fee. They've mitigated that. And there was a discussion this morning from three different regions in the state. The North Shore has been very, been very active in conversations with the MWRA. So they are first in line as far as getting on. The South Shore, again, has just completed a study. So they're probably, I would say, they're second in line in getting on to the MWRA. And then the West is us.
Any capacity for all three?
No. No. So, well, that was a question that came up. I mean, this is also happening in conjunction with some serious water conservation efforts. So that's the reason why they have the capacity that they have now. So that, that question, that actual question came up from the audience, and they, of course, they said they weren't sure. But it would be a long, it would be a stretch to think that they could service both the North Shore, the South Shore, and the West. So that kind of plays into what we're, what, Alan Cathcart was the speaker, by the way. He did a great job. With our going forward, what we're going to need to do in order to make investments in our infrastructure to keep our drinking water safe. So this is all.
And I, I think that certainly it's under consideration that we follow suit with the MWRA as an alternative.
Exactly, exactly. But this is all very, yes, it's all very preliminary. This was just a symposium for them. And I think the whole point of today was just for them to say, we're here, we're open for business, we want to talk to you. And.
Ed, you're a third in line.
And you're third in line. That's the impression I got. Well, of course, it was, they were talking to the whole room, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was pretty clear that we're kind of third in line. But, but we're in line.
Yeah, yeah.
We're in line. So that was, that was good.
And they're trying to sell us water.
And they're trying to sell us water. Right.
We'll be happy to take it.
And we'll be happy to take it.
Leave us the water, we'll take the drink.
Anyway, that was, that was my thing.
All right. And that was your liaison report.
Yes.
Next, anybody?
I can go.
Yeah.
I attended the groundbreaking ceremony for the Habitat House on Carmel. And so that's launched, which is good. The Concord Housing Authority is already preliminary thinking about what the next house would be that hopefully could be added to the SHI. And that is a potential, looking at an existing 1031 Main Street at the corner of Stratfordshire and Main Street on an existing CHA property. But it would require, it requires some, many steps in terms of exploring with the town and what, about what would be possible on that lot. The Concord Housing Development Corporation met again and did some substantial work on the build out for their application for Estebet River Bluff that's going to the CPA. And the, I think we're already aware that the recent CPC meeting made their preliminary recommendations for all the applications, and that that final vote is anticipated at their meeting this coming week. And Planning Board, we already know about the Concord Academy project moving forward to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dane? 2025, we had a meeting of our Communications Subcommittee, and we now have a group of people working on logos and taglines for the 250th anniversary. There was a meeting of our Finance Committee on Thursday, where we're collecting budget estimates on a standardized form from all 10 subcommittees. And I think that we'll have them all digested Thursday afternoon. And Carrie mentioned how really terrific the, the holiday parade was yesterday evening. It was really a great community celebration with a lot of enthusiasm. And the Public Ceremonies Committee did a terrific job with the parade, and the Rec Department, and the Chamber of Commerce. And it was, it was a lot of fun. And it was really, I think, the first time since before COVID that we had a really great community event in town to bring people together. It was fantastic.
Carrie?
Okay, the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee is going to need two members, one right away, because someone's moving out of town, and another one in the spring. So we need to add that to the list. And they're going to do a site walk at Junction Park after the planters are installed, to take a look at that. And. After the planters are installed.
You don't know when the.
No.
But the spring, maybe.
Yeah, I don't think before the spring.
Yeah, I guess I don't know a date.
Not a good planting season.
And the Personnel Board has been even busier than you heard tonight, because they also heard an appeal from CMLP a few months ago that they'd been working on for several months. And they've decided that the town administration actions were reasonable, but they strongly recommend better communication to employees in the future, which is tied in with what we heard tonight, anyway. The PEG Access Committee is working hard on the Comcast franchise. And in February, the consultant will be coming with them to a Select Board meeting. And finally, the MMA Fiscal Policy Committee has proposed resolution supporting and enduring fiscal partnership between cities and towns and the Commonwealth in fiscal 2024 and beyond. And this is going to be voted at the annual meeting in January. The resolution lays the groundwork for an effective revenue sharing program identifying municipal needs in areas such as unrestricted aid, education, and charter school finance, employee benefit liabilities, capital needs such as road maintenance, municipal and school facilities, water and wastewater, climate resilience, broadband, and cyber preparedness.
Is that all?
That's all.
I had one of those very rare weeks where I did not have any meetings.
Good for you.
Yay.
Other than our own.
All of Earth, other than our giant.
And that's ended this week. It's going to be packed this week. So, okay. So, let's see. I think now we're, we can identify correspondence that we received this week. Let's see, in the packet, there's a letter mentioning the reelection of Peter J. Fulton to the Retirement Board. I don't think we have anything else in our packet this week. So now we're ready for public comment. So now we're ready for public comment.
We have a hand raised.
Okay, online? Sure. Please identify yourself, make your comment.
Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road. I just wanted to say that they can't really tour the planters until the town votes the CPC funding to have the planters actually created. So that's going to be a sutter step, that's going to be, it's going to be in that order, I believe.
You mean, so they could not even be put in until May?
Right, yeah, because the, you know, we're, I mean, they may have the funding for the town.
I was going to say, there's certainly enough money to lay down a planter, two or three.
Yes, and then this, and then this money will then supplement that process. But I do know that it's considerable amount of funding for that. So just, just to say that there is an order. And to say that Henry was great in reading the name of the person that won the Concord for Ukraine quilt in which we raised $16,500. So the town of Concord's generosity was, is notable. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And I see another hand. Please identify yourself. Mr. Perry?
Thank you very much. Ned Perry, 362 Bedford Street. I'd like to thank the Select Board for agreeing two years ago to appoint the Personnel Study Task Force. It appeared that most of you understood this evening how difficult, how different the activities of the Personnel Board are since the filing of the Personnel Study Task Force report a couple of months ago. Unfortunately, the activities of the Human Resources Director continue to leave many questions. In particular, I trust the document that was provided to the Select Board this evening will be as soon as possible provided to the Personnel Board, where one would think it would have been provided to begin with, and to the public, and that it would be post haste. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Galis?
Good evening. Mark Galis, 62 Prescott Road. I thank the Board for all these long deliberations tonight. I want to praise the team that's put together the housing production plan. That must be a very difficult job, doing all this in fairly short order with lots of comments coming in. I wanted to take this opportunity to just highlight a concern that I had with page 28 of the draft plan, which is, has a background and status paragraphs for narrative of the project off Winterbrook Street, I guess it is, for housing and affordable housing. And I've sent, as you know, a letter to the Select Board with a few concerns I have about the exact wording of the narrative and the impression it might make, for example, to the DHDC when they read it. And I also copied the town manager. Anybody who wants to see the letter can apply to me or ask the town. It's a public record. But I am concerned about some things in the wording, and I've expressed those concerns in the letter. But I don't feel qualified to suggest changes. I think the board members and the staff and other people have more detailed information about the narrative. But I just wanted to ask people to look again at page 28, see if there's anything they think could be improved. There's a choice about how much detail to go into in such a narrative. But whatever level of detail is chosen, everything should be very precise and factual, in my opinion, and not leave things open for misinterpretations. Thank you very much.
I thought, for one, your comment was a very good one, yeah. I believe we heard tonight that it's going to be incorporated, so.
Well, I just, again, if the board members or anybody who has more specific knowledge could send that in. I'm a little bit concerned that I heard that the, thank you for letting me continue my comment. That I heard that, was my impression, that the Planning Board is going to do a review. I don't know if there are changes after that and then the Select Board. But if people endorse anything I say or have a way of suggesting specific improvements, I would encourage people to send that to the team.
I believe we're going to have a final draft within a week or so, I believe, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, any other public comment? Yes, come up, state your name, address, make your comment.
Sorry, it's late. Toby Chotary, 100 Kays Road, Kai's Road. I grew up on, in Kenny Lane, where the old Kenny Farm was built. And I don't have the kind of credentials that everyone at this table has. But I don't think that I'm any different from anyone who's tried to make something with their life. And so I really just wanted to bring to the attention of the Board here that since the first week of school this year, I've been, I've been stopped several times, questioned several times. And I just need to understand why this is happening. And if there's been any review of these cases. It first started at the Alcott School when I was trying to pick up my son from kindergarten in the first week of school. Then a week, about a week later, in the center of town, I was stopped by the police for unclear reasons to myself. And there've been a couple of other instances since then. And I guess I'm most, I'm most concerned about it really because I'm raising a third generation of my family here in Concord now, my son in kindergarten. And, well, I guess it really comes back to what I heard my son say to me about, about an episode of Sesame Street that we were watching, where they were talking about a little prayer, that, you know, I may be poor, but I am somebody. That I may be small, but I am somebody. That I may be young, but I am, I am somebody. I may be on welfare, but I am somebody. I may have made mistakes, but I am somebody. That I may look different, I may wear different clothes. My face may be different, my hair may be different, but I am somebody. I may be black, I may be brown, I may be white, but I am somebody. That I must be respected, that I must be protected, and that I must never be rejected, that I am a son of God. That was the prayer on Sesame Street. And it makes me think that we all are somebody. And I really believe that I deserve to know why this keeps happening to me. And I'd like to ask for us to do a real review of this or to investigate this, to understand this a little bit better so that we can move on. I know that I am meeting with the town manager on Wednesday to talk more about this. But it's been over 75 days since the start of this, and I've been having conversations about it. And I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. And I'll just close with this. That it is going to be very important that we do a review on this and understand it better. But I just want to close on the memory of one of our neighbors when I was growing up. The late Marjorie Archibald, who was a teacher, an educator here in Massachusetts Wells in South Carolina. And it was probably when I was age seven that her son Nathan Archibald was throwing cranberries at me and another neighbor. And I came home that day from school, and I told my mother, who worked in the Concord Public Schools for some time, about what happened. And she called Mrs. Archibald, and they had a conversation. And within about 30 minutes, Nathan Archibald was at our home with tears in his eyes. And he apologized very sincerely for what happened. And it was a true turning point. It was a true turning point because after that, he not only never threw cranberries at me again, but we were actually able to figure out how we could be friends and work together like we did as a neighborhood. That apology was really important for a turning point. And there hasn't been any apology, there hasn't been any explanation. And I just want to make sure that we're on the same page, that this is the situation that I'm dealing with. Because I do believe that any delays and distractions to an explanation aren't really deserved. Because I, like all of us, am somebody. So I'd like to close on that.
Thanks for your comment. Okay, so any other public comment? Then I think we're done with tonight's meeting, and we can adjourn. Until the 19th of December.